August twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, Lincoln County Board of County Commissioners is now in discussion if you would join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, minutes from August nineteenth to two thousand nineteen, just a little recap. Correspondence from Schwab Eaton for the landslide, we did sign that, we had a tax abatement. An Elkhorn Creek, four and a half foot diameter culvert. We did email the county attorney about the status of the survey for the Wilson Lake Estates housing plan. Talked about the bridge coming into town here by the park, we approved the minutes. We approved the LAPC appointments. There will be a fire chiefs meeting on September third, that's also our budget hearing. Dennis Cross, his bid was received and approved. And I did not get to talk to him personally, I did stop by and I will, I will follow up on that, just as a side note. We put out the advertisement, or approved the advertisement I should say, for highway department positions, reviewed the budget, set the hearing for the third. Talked about the job. We set an agenda item for September ninth to discuss the evaluations. And we did make a motion to file suit over the nursing home to recover the past due rent and then the adjournment. I don't have any particular edits, do you?
I'm over, we approved the minutes as written.
I'll second, moved and seconded to accept the minutes from.
Nineteen August.
Two thousand nineteen, or August nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, any further discussion? If not, does in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Just pass those down. Correspondence, would you like to just mention that under correspondence? Or, no, you have a.
I've got, yeah, at the end of, yeah, I want to talk about.
Okay.
We can do it anytime you want.
No, that's okay, we'll, we'll skip that for now. We'll just mention this under correspondence, from the clerk's office, we received a list of. About nine different addresses that owe on their bill for.
Rep dues.
Yes.
Solid waste collection?
Solid waste collection, and then if that is unpaid, it gets added to the property tax bill. So, this will become set for hearing on, what did you say, the sixteenth?
Yes.
Of September, any questions about that? Most of them are Lincoln, there's one Sylvan Grove and one Beverly. I should check our email, and then I was asked, Don, can we list our email on the website for the commission, please? And then that email will serve as a correspondence for the entire board, of course, you can still contact each individual commissioner, but. I would, I will be opening correspondence that way during the open meeting. Do we have any other correspondence that you want to bring forth?
Well, I'll, I'll update you on the, Mr. Gableman asked about the bridge by the park. And I talked to Jess Meyer, the, the boss at the highway department about looking into that, and he said he had before, and even though it looks like there had been some.
Sorry.
You got hacked, huh?
I don't know, I was just trying to get into our email here, so that's scary.
Malware.
I think it might just be an ad, actually.
Anyway, I mean, I talked to Jess Meyer about the bridge Jimmy was concerned about, and he said, really, it, with all the water we had, the sides do like shifted and. But he says the structure, once you get inside there, is still pretty stable, that's his opinion. Also, I talked to Tanner, who's our engineer, that we deal with with the highway department, and he was, I called him, and he was going to be up here anyway. When, when our greater, greater drivers had an issue over by Barnard, and he was going to coordinate with that guy, but also, when he was up here, I was asking to look at the, this bridge. So, and he will come in later today, so maybe he can update what he thinks about that bridge, so that's where we're on on that issue, the park.
The whole thing, I wanted to just make sure it got put on our schedule of things to do at the county at some time.
Yeah.
Not necessarily that we need to do anything today.
Sure.
There was some question about the ownership.
Well, part of.
To verify that.
Well, part of it was, if you go north, that's the park, which the city owns, and then south is farmland by a farmer, so which is county. So, we're on the borderline there between city and county, and I asked Jess, I said, another year's, why do you, who has jurisdiction over that, is it? And as far as he knew, he said, in situations like that, usually the county would deal with something like a bridge, because they really don't have the facilities to do, or the equipment to do that, the city doesn't. Now, that's what he was saying, I don't know the legal, I haven't checked with the legal end of the spectrum of who would be responsible with that.
Don, are you, I think you had mentioned, are you aware of some sort of paperwork, or we had taken on responsibility for that?
We did not take on responsibility for that, but in the past, road supervisors have said, because of the cemetery being and the, and you have the city park, you have the cemetery, all of that is owned. And then there's a blank where the bridge is at, and then the city owns it, that they can't do that, that the city can't just vacate a road and a bridge and a structure if they have conjoining properties. But I don't know the statute, so somebody would have to research it.
Okay, we could look into that, and what if, what if we worked with them where they could almost subcontract the county to do the work, and we could even afford a portion of our, you know, we may be able to afford the.
Well, they take it.
Manpower.
They think it's county responsibility.
But what she's saying is, you'd have to actually establish that, because if it's a city road and it has city properties on either side.
Well, it's county on the south side, that farmland.
For a very, very small portion of land.
I know, but that is, that's county farmland, which is.
Wait, you mean we own that field and it's being leased?
No, 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 the county does not own it, it's, it's.
It's owned by farmer, but it's, it's not in the city limits, not in the city limits.
So, there's a jacket edge for the city limit, they just come up to the road and.
So, basically, they took out that portion where the, where the bridge is.
And said it wasn't a city road.
Yeah.
So, I, there it is.
But it is, because there's that statute, so somebody would have to look at the statute, that's what your road supervisors have said over the past.
Do you know what, what that's called, just a subtitle of it or something?
Complicating life down there, I believe the city has an option to expand the cemetery to the west, and I don't know how that option has been recorded many, many years ago, if it's still in effect or not. But if they want to expand the cemetery, they're, I think they have an option coming west.
But that west, that's Terry Finch owns that pasture and that farmland.
The city has an option to acquire.
Well, he owns.
Dell Wilson.
So, toward the city is west.
Don't tell that, even farmland and they were Terry's.
There used to be the dairy farm.
Okay.
The good thing is, the bridge doesn't need to be fixed.
Well, Jeff looked into it, it's like a block of culvert, and he said, the structure, the structure's solid inside there, so it doesn't look like it's going to cave in, it's just.
The wing walls?
The wing walls have been adjusted, you can see that, what we have, you know, water was, water was two foot over top of that bridge here, you know, a few months ago.
We may be able to absorb the manpower cost if they would pay for materials, we could, they could somehow subcontract us to provide workforce for it, but.
The better, the more concern is the walking bridge.
Yeah, a year or so ago, they had.
Yeah, that walking bridge, yeah, right next to this bridge.
South of the bridge, on the south side of the bridge, the sidewalk comes across the road.
It's a walking slingshot.
A year or so ago, they decided that was completely unsafe, so might need to fix it, but nobody ever did.
Yeah, it's like a rope, rope bridge there, like a kid would make, you know, out in the park, or, so, yeah, that could be dangerous. Is that the responsibility to the city or the county or somebody?
Well, we have to establish.
Yeah, I don't know. That probably isn't safe, though, I'm sure it got damaged with all this high water, too.
Is there even a way to get to it now?
What's that?
To walk over that bridge now?
Sure.
Is there?
Well, yeah, there's a path, you know, there's.
There's a sidewalk on the south side, you can walk down the sidewalk.
Other road.
And there's a south, there's a sidewalk bridge.
I was going to say, because I never really noticed once, so let's not be very well taken care of.
No, it's, it's a sidewalk.
I'd say there's.
I know one goes up past the bridge towards the cemetery.
Yeah, and I think it goes down, but it may be covered with dirt.
That's kind of what I wondered, because.
But the one that goes up towards the cemetery, like the tree roots have taken the concrete.
So, it's not really safe anyway.
It's not.
So, the purpose of the bridge really is nothing, because the sidewalk isn't, isn't safe.
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah, so repairing the bridge is kind of like.
And I don't know how often a bridge would be used, because.
Well, that's it, I mean.
Well, now, there's two different, we're talking about the sidewalk.
Yeah, the sidewalk bridge, yeah.
That's not part of our issue right now, just the road bridge.
Well, I know you had said something about, you know, it needed fixing.
But the sidewalk bridge has been declared unsafe a couple of years ago, a whole different deal, yeah.
It's been unsafe for quite a while. I just wondered, you know, because I've never seen a sidewalk.
Yeah, but there's a sidewalk on there.
Anyway, that's all I have on that, Alexis.
Classification and designation of roads and non-county unit road system counties, but that's not a county unit, they are a county unit.
I have another update, I guess, too, on the.
Oh, Norm, me, no, or Norm.
Bowers.
Bowers, sorry.
Also, on the nursing home, on the doors, we had this.
The fire doors.
The fire doors, we've been dealing with this, I don't know if we should.
I'm going to bring that up in my thing.
Well, I can just say, I talked.
If you want, we can do it now, as far as correspondence.
Do we have Mrs. Budkey here? Okay, so go ahead.
Well, I'm just saying, I contacted this D H space, who you guys approved a year and a half ago, too.
Let me, let me interrupt you, and let's go back and, let's do my correspondence thing and get that out of the way, because that's part of the issue.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Grace came to visit me at one o'clock on Thursday at my place of business, and he gave us this piece of paper, which I have given you one if you want.
You can look it up, that's what I'm doing.
I've got one, too.
Go ahead.
But anyway, he said, as far as he can tell, these are the four options for the nursing home, continue to lease the building, lease it to either nonprofit or for profit. Nonprofit, he suggested Good Samaritan System, Presbyterian Manor via Christie. For profit, he suggested Mission Health, Midwest Health, or Minneapolis Health and Rehab. The second option was a vote, we put it to a vote to the citizenry to see if they want to build a new or remodel the one that we have now. Third option that he saw was organize a local nonprofit and let them purchase the building, and fourth is to close it, he didn't see any other options. He is not interested after his lease runs out in maintaining that property. Now, to get to your issue, he pulled out of his briefcase a check for the amount of the back rent, and said, I have this check right here, and as soon as you people start work on those fire doors, which you have promised to do years ago, I will give you this check. So, I don't know whether that was tickled by the last meeting we had with the minutes, or what tickled it, but he is prepared to pay the back rent as soon as we start doing the maintenance that we have agreed to do.
I thought it wasn't making any money, and he was just.
I'm just a messenger, I agree with what he told me.
Yeah.
Well, and then I'll just say again, Alexis and the previous board, you guys approved this, you know.
Yes, and, I mean, it needs to be stressed to the person who runs the nursing home, and this is that appendix A. We are not responsible for doing the work, we pay the bill, when the bill comes across the desk, we sign it and it gets paid, or we approve the bid for the contract of whoever's doing the work. We do not physically ensure that the work is done, if the leasing of the property has a problem with who's doing the work, they also need to be in contact with them. So, it's not the board and county commissioners' responsibility to ride this company until they get up there, in fact, what we should do is withdraw the bid and give it to someone else, because I don't understand why they haven't.
I know, I called this woman's.
What did they say?
She said, oh, we'll get right on it, I'm sorry, and we'll get, and they'll get right back, of course, they never got, this is like third time, so I don't know if they have an issue with their company not doing their work, uh, but, yeah, you guys approved that, you know.
One time, they came back and said, well, or, it was when Greg Babcock was working there, he came back and said, they weren't going to install the doors until they had a drawing for the fire marshal that described the fire rating of the walls and the ceiling surrounding the door that was to be installed. However, we already chose the highest rating doors, so that shouldn't have been an issue, but if they wanted the drawing, it should have been.
And I got that Eric Johnson, I gave it, he emailed me that Ford plan, I emailed it to you, too, so we have the drawing in now, I don't know what we should do, it's Ashley Sperry.
Before we were drawing to her.
Well, we could do that, but I, she didn't ask for that, she just, I don't know, I'm, I don't know if we should, I know maybe if it's our responsibility to keep contact with them, I would miss.
Well, it's our responsibility to pay them, it's not our responsibility to coordinate the job.
Well, somebody has to, and I don't think Mr. Grace would, because he's the operator, we probably have to, when it comes to facility, Alexis, like the roof and that, we have to, nobody else is going to do it, because we are in charge of taking care of the facility, nobody else is, so it does come down to us.
I understand what you're saying, but we've already approved them to go there, it would be up to them to find a time to discuss with the people who work in the building, when they're going to do it, how they're going to do it. You know, it's the same issue we got into, we approved this big remodeling project for half a million dollars, then we were told that, oh, well, the operator didn't have access to two of these rooms during that process. That was all communication between the remodeling companies and the people that work there, not us, we weren't trying to micromanage, as we're accused of doing, what was happening inside the building. So, if they need to get in there at a specific time and shut down a certain hallway, that's not a.
Well, that hadn't come to that point yet, we just got to get them to get there to do it, you know, if they wish, they'd say, we're going to come next month and do this, then we could schedule with Grace, say, hey, we're going to do this. But, uh, right now, we can't even get them to come, I'm going to call them one more time and I'll say, are you going to do these doors, or are we, we'll go somewhere else, because we've been messing around with them here for a moment, in my opinion, if that's all right with you guys.
Maybe we just need to call them now.
Yeah, call her, call her right now, that Ashley Sperry. And they seem willing to want to work with you, but then they never get back to you, I mean, it's like third time here.
Yeah, when was this approved, do we have a date on that?
Yeah, a year and a half, right there, January, that's it. January of the twenty eighteen.
Twenty-eight thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars. So, that would come out of, it's too late for it to come out of last year's, correct, in Sylvia? They don't even answer the phone.
And Hannah said Cheryl was running a few minutes late, so we could probably swatch Sean and Cheryl.
Hello, hi Kathy, my name is Alexis Flug, and I am from Lincoln County, Kansas, and we had ordered a replacement of doors through you guys for our nursing home here, fire doors. And I. Well, I was trying to contact Ashley Sperry, and I was just put through to you on hold, so.
Oh, it's registered, well, let me get you, um, let me see if I can get you over here, hold on.
Okay. Yeah, I called five-one-two-fifteen-eleven.
Okay, I don't know, sometimes phone lines get rerouted, or, I don't know, but let me try to put you through directly to her.
Okay.
Obviously not there.
Hello, Ashley, this is Alexis from the Lincoln County Board of County Commissioners, and I think you had spoken with Randy Lowman as well. We are asking about the quote that you guys did, number W I C two thousand eighteen, one, zero, two, zero, one, and we want, we would like a follow-up on that, to know when that project is going to begin. My phone number is seven-two-four-seven-one-four-seven-nine-zero-zero, or you can look up Lincoln County online and speak to our clerk, thank you.
Like, yeah, but that's where we're at, so anyway.
Okay.
So, yeah, I don't know.
That's because you have it to throw away, it's just some of his thoughts, I just, he wrote it out and I passed it on, that's all I had to tell you about John Grace.
Okay. So, we don't miss, Cheryl Budkey's out here right now, I'm sure.
Sean, is he sitting outside, or where do you?
Well, he was here.
He must have went upstairs, I asked Hannah if she would go see if he was up there.
We told him he'd be by time ten forty-five.
He might be upstairs in the appraiser's office.
I don't, I'm, I don't know about the, we're just looking up the statutes here about that road.
We could probably talk to the.
Yeah, I will definitely contact.
Mayor and the city council.
Yeah, and I will definitely contact Norm Bowers, because you may or may not be.
It may not need any fixing right now, but in the future, I mean, we need to determine who's involved with all that.
So, Don, do you happen to know, does the city limit line come from around the cemetery, come in to cut out that field, but does it cut clear across the road and then out? I mean, is there supposedly a section of road that is excluded from within the city limits?
The entire road, so they, I, my understanding.
They went around the cemetery and over across the road and down, and then cut it back across.
It's kind of my understanding, see, ironically, the, the cemetery, when the congressional districts redrew their line, the cemetery is actually in Troy Weimester's district, and everything else is in Susan Concanon's, because of that.
Because of the way they drew the city limit line?
Yes, trying to avoid.
Which they also, when they, was that the same time when they changed the city limit to go up and around and include Dollar General and then, or is that something different?
I think this one's been a long time.
Before that?
A very long time, probably.
So, you're saying, really, then, that bridge is really in the city limits, because the south side of it's in the city, huh, where that walking bridge would be, it'd be city, too.
What I understand is that cities are not allowed to vacate roads.
When they have the property.
To just get out of the realm of being responsible for them when they have property on both sides of the road. Now, mind you, there's a small portion of that that is not city limits, but is there a reason why it's not city limits?
I'll just read this one quickly before we move on, K S A sixty-eight-five-seventy-two, intergovernmental agreements for road construction and maintenance, county, city, and township. The board of county commissioners of any county, any township board, of highway commissioners of this county or city governing body within such county, are hereby authorized to enter into agreements for the construction, reconstruction, or maintenance of any roads or streets. Such agreements may also provide methods of mutual assistance and cooperation whereby the machinery, equipment, and employees of the county and township may be used for grading or bringing to grade township roads by the county or by the county and township, and the completion and maintenance thereof by the township. Such agreements may also provide for the improvement and maintenance of city boundary-lined roads or streets in accordance with the provisions of K S A twelve-six-ninety-three. And amendments there, too, any such agreement between a county and a township may require the county engineer, and is hereby made the county engineer's duty in conformity therewith, to make all necessary surveys for the laying out or bringing to grade any of such township routes. So, I think we need to look at that map and contact Norm and look at, see, that's what I'm wondering, if you, if the city decides to change its boundary lines, does the county just automatically absorb anything that the city then relinquishes? Because at one time, did the city boundary include that, and then when they cut it out, does the county just automatically have to absorb that, or is that a dispute? So, that would be something to look into. Okay, Mr. Estrel, I believe we are ready for you.
All righty, well, good morning, guys.
Morning.
Good morning, Carl. I have a couple of cards for you guys.
Thanks for swapping.
Yep, glad to do. Wanted to give an update on, second quarter of two thousand nineteen. Back to you. And a couple others if anybody's interested. And you guys haven't seen these before, but it, just the way we logged our field activities in the county, and, uh, so, uh, through April, through June, we had five inspections on the subject side, two consults, ended up the grand total of twenty-one hours. The two consults would be cost share letter applications for the non-point source, and then we had, it's like nine inspections on wells, those would either be water testing, well, um, sittings, as we call them, approvals. Want the well permits prior, and a total of twenty-seven hours on that, and then, so we did three water testing, one full, which is why you see the six hours on April, that's the full thirteen analysis that we do, and then two, what we call bases.
What's the designation, again, S E and K U, Sean?
Uh, Sean Estrel, Kevin Urban is the other.
Oh, those two different people, okay, and you were, and you were the one doing all this work, okay.
Occasionally, when I'm at Harvest or, um, or on vacation, Kevin comes.
Okay, I forgot what that was.
That's all right, and then on the backside, we did school inspections in April, Ladona and I, we did both Lincoln and Sylvan County schools, spent about twelve hours in the schools doing those inspections.
What do you inspect then?
Yeah.
Kind of, kind of go for room for room, and we look for things that really shouldn't be in there, usually it's, um, bug sprays or, or stuff that can't be in the reach, or, um, there's also chemicals. So, we look for, if they're supposed to be in a fire safe, if they're just being stored, something that could actually explode and.
It's kind of like what, you have M S D S compliance or something?
Yes, and we talked to him about updating the M S D S sheets, one thing that I will say, from Ladona and I, when we first started doing the school inspections a couple of years ago, they had, some of those are kind of grossly outdated, and now they have a copy of it, not only at the school, but in each part of the school, and then also at the board offices. So, if there was a fire, the fire department could contact the board office and find out what kind of chemicals they're having and running into there, but in, in general, it's just, uh, water, wastewater, just making sure the lighting's good, and then obvious things, you know, leaky roof. Those things that, a lot of times, uh, they can use our opinion on trying to repair these, so. they can use our opinion on trying to repair these. So if, if it's a teacher saying this is a, you know, this is an issue and you have somebody outside saying, hey, this also needs to be fixed. And then also, we also like to assist. Nobody's really asked us yet, but in doing some grant writing, you know, like, I'd like to see the fire saves, especially for Lincoln and so on. You know, we could do a Dan Hansen scholarship where we could apply for those and try to, um, get funding to pay for those. A lot of times the people just don't realize that those chemicals, or you know, they, they realize it, but they, you know, they just get out of hand, whether it's in the ventilation issues, you know, we, Lincoln has its own, uh, printing room, so the chemicals in there and the kids use and making sure they have proper ventilation. Those things, uh, kind of get overlooked from time to time. So, um, we do those reminders, but it, it pretty much is a room per room.
Not like Lincoln's doing remodeling at the grade school now. After they're done, then, then do you go in and inspect, make sure there's, what they did's okay or all that?
And then, um, the prior principal, I'll have to visit with the new one. Once the, the air conditioning units were fixed, he wanted us to do around the radon testing in the, the school. But we wanted to wait till after the H C, A C units were updated. So I look forward to doing that. So we'll see if there's any issues on that side of it. So, um, and then the one meeting to finish this out was, uh, coming here for the quarterly update, the first quarter. So we ended up with seventy hours. And then it kind of, I just wanted to summarize so far how this year's going. We've had a hundred and one hours in the first quarter. Our five-year average is, uh, two hundred and sixty-two hours. And that five years is from two thousand fourteen to two thousand eighteen. And then it's not written down. If you'd like me to, I could.
Sorry, I missed you.
And then, um, we've been doing some in-house work on, uh, seeing where our time's spent and how that funding is going. So fourteen percent of my time, my two thousand hours is spent in Lincoln County. And, um, on a five-year average for Lincoln County, we do a hundred and thirteen visits. And then, um, there was talks on our contracts about, um, indirect costs and fringe benefits and how that all played out. So, uh, I kind of got to some of the bottom of that. So the indirect costs, our admin support, our cell phones, we have laptops in our technology. And, um, we are getting new laptops this year to tune about twenty-six hundred bucks a piece for them. And that's on a, a regular rotational. I think they're four years. Yeah.
What do you do with the old ones?
Uh, they'll go to different departments and, and, um, get, I think ours, to be honest, will go to the sheriff's office. Um, because they like, ours is, we have a hardy book, if you've ever seen mine. Um, they're pretty durable. Um, I've dropped it by accident a few times.
Oh, yeah.
At the sheriff's office, they'll.
So you can just wipe them clean and then send them?
Yeah.
That's good. They recycle them.
Yep. And R I T Department really does a great job of trying to update that, but we're happy to update because I do a lot of presentations and, uh, old Windows sevens just won't work with the modern day presentations. So we'll be getting the Windows ten stuff. And then on the, the other technology side, um, our Hawk, uh, water testing equipment, um, it's no longer serviceable. We bought that in ninety-six and, um, we can't calibrate it anymore. So I'm working with K D H E and Kansas Environmental Health Association. And I'm going to write a grant through the Kansas Health Foundation and, uh, see if we can't update our equipment. Those Hawk machines are forty-four hundred dollars a piece. There's roughly about twenty L A P P groups, uh, in the state of Kansas that have those machines. So, um, it'll be substantial amount of money that we, of course, can't outflow it out of our department. So we're looking for other avenues of trying to update that so we can keep offering that service. Uh, office supplies, which you might think office supplies is kind of a joke, but, uh, our printer and the maintenance on our printer is like a hundred and ninety bucks a month. It does get kind of pricey. And I think we go through about fifty, sixty bucks of, uh, paper. And then our training and certificates, um, you know, I have my E B L license, my radon measurement, radon mitigation, uh, my risk ass, risk assessor and lead. All those have continuing educations that you have to have. So my radon's coming up. I need to take some more radon classes and.
Out of curiosity, have you been asked to test anything where the wind farm is?
Has anybody ever tested for radon? Uh, no.
Or anything else out there?
Outside or in?
Just within the vicinity of where the wind farm is. You know, you hear things, I, I don't know anything about it, but you hear things like that from just news reports and other.
Uh-uh, not on the radon side. The ambient indoor or outdoor, uh, air for radons are usually around point seven picocuries per liter. So it's not very, not very high. So, um, the E P A has set recommendations at four picocuries per liter. So if it's in your house, anything above four, they recommend you do some ventilation, which is, uh, basically they'll create a vacuum underneath your subfloor of your home and capture the radon, suck it out before it comes into your home. So, but radon is a second leading cause of lung cancer and kills twenty-one thousand people a year. And, um, in our area, we have between five and seven per a hundred thousand populace die every year of it.
Where?
In, in our north central Kansas region.
They're from radon poisoning? Is that what it's called? Or you just mean because they have, they were, they got, they ended up with lung cancer due to exposure to it?
Right. And what they do is they do the number of deaths for a hundred thousand. So like, in our area, it says five to seven. So Salina has roughly fifty thousand people. So you can figure between two and three people's going to die every year from radon. So that's something.
How do they can determine that really?
On, on those.
Can't test positive for radon exposure and your lung cancer is then detected within?
Lung cancer from radon.
You can test hot, you can test.
It's different.
You can test a person for radon?
Yeah. Well, you can't test them for radon. It's actual D K products, the bismuth, palladium, and back to radioactive lead. Those are alpha and beta radiation emitters.
Okay.
So when you breathe it in, radon, ninety-nine point three percent of what you breathe in, you just exhale. But as that decays, um, the bismuth and the palladium, it binds to your lung tissue and then it destroys the lung tissue. So, um, and.
So can you test for the bismuth and the palladium in the tissue and know that it's, it's already like attached itself or?
Well, no, you kind of go back to the, um, you find out what the radon level is and then, so each one has its own shelf life. So it's kind of hard to explain. So like, um, bismuth and palladium, so like one might be effective for seven days, one might be effective for thirty-four days. And so you breathe this in, you'll get a half-life. And then, um, so that's constantly affecting you. Whatever day you're bringing in more of it. So it's a compounding aspect of it that, that does harm to you. If you'd like, I could get some information and bring in.
That's interesting. I didn't know that.
And, um.
So can you be asked to come and test for radon at any, anywhere specifically or?
Yes, we have.
By an individual and with the.
Private residential, someone's house.
Well, um, the fee is what we're trying to work on. I think we're going to end up around a hundred dollars. And that's me leaving a radon monitor and coming back. The radon monitor will run four days and it reads every hour on the hour. Now, you can go buy the short-term kits, which are, uh, three to seven days. I always tell people to do five days. That way if you forget it, you can come back and remember. But those just tell you an average of what the test result is. The thing that's nice about the, using the continuous monitor is it tells you what the levels is for the average hour of the day. So a lot of times radon fluctuates like this throughout the day. It's like a radio wave. It always seems to be higher evening and morning. Well, that just happens to be when everybody's at home. And so if you knew those readings were that high when you were there, that might affect whether you choose to do your radon mitigation or not.
So I should have asked you this a long time again, a long time ago, but just out of curiosity, so I can put it out there. What is a person allowed to request from you? I know you can do water testing. Now you can ask for radon testing. What else?
Um, as far as service access, so we do well.
If someone out here wanted to have their residents tested for these, these array of things, what are they all?
Okay. Well, testing's a little different than what I do, just, just so you know that. So like, I can go out, I'm a healthy home specialist. So I can go out and, and identify things in their home as far as.
Mold and.
Yes. But we actually don't do the testing because we're not a state, we're not set up as a lab like that. So I could go out and.
But someone can send water samples through you guys to get, I know you're not the lab, but.
Yeah, we are the lab on those.
Oh, you are the lab for the water sample?
But we technically do those as a form of screenings, random of screenings. And we're not a state certified labs. We kind of fly.
But you can call and request radon detection, which means you come out and.
Leave the monitor. And then, and then, um, we do the, if, anything on the healthy home side. So if there's anything in your home that's, that you're not feeling comfortable about, you know, whether it's indoor air quality, I could come look it over. Most of the issues on the indoor air quality are to do with water getting into your house. It's, right, and molds. And so if you can address most, for me, is just identifying and we have moisture meters. So we can try to identify where it's coming into the house and, and then make recommendations now. Those recommendations might be extensive depending on the house. And so we try to prioritize what, what is it critical that you need to adjust? And then we try to work with outside organizations to see if we can help fund some of these.
This is all this rain we've been having. We've had people's basements and sellers getting water in and then to some pumps running. That's probably not good because then that creates moisture for your underfloor and everywhere else and mold and all that, right?
Yeah. And you need to use a dehumidifier to get the.
If you have mold box in there, is there, you have some techniques or you have some supplies or something to get rid of that mold?
We, we really recommend just soap and water. A lot of people use a Clorox. A lot of those are asthmatic triggers. So you have to be careful using too much cleaning supplies. Now, they do make environmental friendly supplies that are not, don't have the residual that can trigger other.
The basic Clorox bleached, uh.
You really just want to use soap and water. Now, the, the key with mold is you never want to do it dry. You want to wet it all down. Uh, I encourage people to go get rags and some air masks and use, spray it down with wet, use baby wipes, literally wipe the wall down, go straight in the trash bag with it. Wipe it all down till it's gone and then let it set because it's going to keep coming back until you, you clean it enough times that it's not there. But you got to stay on top of the water issue. And it's, it's a, it's a barricat.
Especially when we have all this rain and your, your water keeps coming in your basement and your cellar.
Right, right. Um, getting back to your, there, we do work with people that could come out and do the, the testing on the mold, for example, and then also do the repair on it. So we don't want to get too heavily in the repair. We try to help them find a source for the, the, the funding for the repairs. But we don't want to get too actively involved in it. There's all kinds of firms that do stuff of that nature. Just have to find the right one and their willingness to come this far out of Salina to it. Um, we do well sightings, water testing, um, just anything on the indoor.
Septic systems.
Septic systems. We do, uh, consults. Um, so we go out and talk to people if they're going to build a house, you know. Where's the best place for, uh, you know, seeing about their septic system in Lincoln?
How to lay it out and how many laterals and figure all that out, don't you?
Right. So we start with soils maps and we try to tell them, you know, the better quality soils, which means the more percale the soil is, the less laterals you need. So we, we discuss all that with the homeowners, um, early on in the process. So.
All right.
Anything else?
Do you get, uh, involved with the conservation district and the closure of wells?
Um, we do. Uh, some of the cost share, uh, goes for some of that. And, um, it's nothing more than saying it's a well that needs to be, um, filled, but they have a form that we fill out that kind of ranks the, ranks it. Um, which is post cost, oh, there's all kinds of factors. If you've ever seen one of those forms, close proximity to the home, close proximity to, um, an area. There is, uh, parts of the county that are designated with higher rankings. Uh, the northwest corner of the county has a little higher need of, um, addressing some of that water quality issue. And so it takes priority over some of the areas.
So just out of curiosity, you said Lincoln County is taking up about fourteen percent of your time?
Right.
And is our, I forget what our contract amount was, thirteen thousand five hundred?
Twelve. That's a good.
Eleven thousand something.
I think it was, I thought it was twelve five, for thirteen five, somewhere in there.
So does the, does Saline County feel that we're covering our cost for utilization for your services? I mean, is that, has that been part of the discussion or?
Yeah, yeah, that's where the discussion is. And so far, you know, they haven't talked about raising it, so.
And we're the only other county that you're doing this at? Elsworth?
We do Elsworth and Ottawa. We do.
And Ottawa.
Yes. And so each county, you know, on the Saline County side, they want to make sure that what we're doing in the neighboring counties pays for our time to do it. And makes that service just doing it. And so, uh, we look at that usually on an every two-year basis of how are we doing? You know, is it covering our mileage? One thing that we really did talk about is another expense that's kind of, is the mileage charge of it. So, you know, we'd have X dollar miles, which we figure at the end of the year, times the number of trips. So that comes up with it.
And you were right, it was thirteen thousand five hundred.
Okay. And then, um, I did want to mention, um, in my time, I do get appointed to things just because I've kind of had a gamut of, um, experience over the year in my career. And so, um, I said on the P F S A's advisory work agenda, it's a, a group, uh, talking about, um, chemicals that are ended up in landfills. And, um, they're a non-stick material, um, used on pizza boxes and popcorn, also used in fire suppression. If you guys are interested, I can get you a little, like a E P A, uh, P F O is one oh one. But, um, back east, this is kind of getting to be a problem. And so, um, the state wants to know if there's any issues. We've done, the state of Kansas really hasn't done a whole lot of testing on it. They done some baseline testing in two thousand and eight. And, uh, had one site come up in Grape Bend, which is not a surprise because Grape Bend, the water's a show there. Um, that anything that comes in, it ends up in the water.
Are you talking about like the lining on the inside of a popcorn bag for microwave?
Yes. Yep. And those, uh, end up, and it's a non-stick material. Anything non-stick is made of these products. And they just have a huge shelf life. They don't go anywhere and then.
That also be like your pan spray?
Yes. Yep. And it, it winds up in your, uh, in your landfill and then ends up in your groundwater. Uh, yeah, some of it is and some of it's not. Well, anyways, and then the other thing I'm working on, and this is, um, just kind of new, I got appointed to it. And, um, there's a E P A grant with the K D H E Bureau of Water. And, um, I was chosen, I applied for it and was chosen for the midsize, uh, local health department out of Salina. And that'll be on the planning stages. And so what we're going to try to do on that grant is to do, uh, lead testing in schools nineteen eighty-eight and older and also childcare facilities. So we'll come up with a plan of how we're going to do a baseline test on that. And then see if it's something to be concerned about in our state of Kansas. So. All right. That's all I know, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yep. Any questions, concerns?
No, thank you for being willing to participate in the cost sharing with the other counties. That definitely makes it worth our while.
Right. Right. Because, you know, Lincoln County or Saline County, it's beneficial for all counties involved. Salina County couldn't function with one sanitarian, but they couldn't afford two by themselves. So if we can share some of that time with the neighboring counties, it's very.
Absolutely.
Very cooperative outfit. I do want to make you guys as new commissioners, I try to take you guys out on the field to get a hands-on of what we do. If I have anything local, I'll try to give you guys a call. You also have my number if anything comes up.
Do you have another card, Sean?
Uh, I can sure get one.
Here, I'll give one right.
Well, you sure. Okay.
I'll get you one more.
Oh, okay. Whatever. That way, that way.
I have one.
Oh, okay. Well, I probably may have from last time I was here too. Doesn't hurt to have another one. Thank you.
Well, we had our numbers changed.
Okay.
Try to pass them around and make sure we get.
Okay, I'll keep that there.
Three, seven, six, one, zero, two, five. Yeah, okay. All right.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Have a good day. All right. Alright. Mrs. Bucky, I believe we are ready for you. Thank you.
Basically, he got involved and leaves some extras with you for any other department heads who might.
Excuse me one moment. Did you need something in particular? Oh, okay, okay, fine. I just wanted to make sure you didn't need something. Alright.
Basically, I just wanted to come today and kind of brief you on some of the things that we offer. Which I have included in this packet. Um your contracts with us are coming due the end of September. And I am working on getting everything put together. Um Dawn and I had a prelim last week just to kinda make sure that I had everything lined up. And then I'll come back with some phone numbers and some options. Um and I'll probably wanna meet with you again so we can go over those. But things are in the computer world are changing. Security is a very high priority anymore with your HIPAA and privacy laws and all of that. We are in a big push to get rid of Windows seven. Because as of January fourteenth, there will no longer be any support. Windows patching or security updates, which will leave those machines vulnerable to hackers. Spyware, ransomware, malware, all of that. Um there is in this packet some information. And I know some people are leaning towards, okay, let's just upgrade our machine to Windows ten, we're good. And that can be done. Um the problem is by the time you pay for the Windows seven. And the time it takes to do the upgrade, you're you're over halfway to the price of a new machine. And if that machine that you're upgrading is several years old. There is that possibility that when you do that upgrade, you're gonna have problems with like your network card driver, your video driver. Things like that. Typically, our technicians have found it is best to go in and save your data off a computer. Wipe it, install Windows from scratch. Because if you don't, sometimes you can run that upgrade and it might work, but every so often you hit quirky little patches. Where things don't work right or a file corrupted or you know, something just went wrong. So it's better to wipe it and start from scratch. Therein lies a problem, if you've got a machine that's five or six years old, that hardware's been discontinued. And finding those drivers for sound, video, network cards, sometimes is difficult if not impossible. Because they just aren't there. And you get ones that are compatible, they may work, they may not. So you could end up with twice as much time to upgrade a machine as you did to just put a new one in. So these are just some of the things and I did include in this packet a. Our quick facts list of what our company does and what our company offers when we were founded. Um we cover a broad spectrum of services everywhere from phone and internet. Which unfortunately, we do not have an internet in this area. We wish we did in Beloit, but. Um we do cloud phone, we do IP phones, we do all sorts of voice contracts. Um we do IT and we're one of the best. And you know, there's a lot of factors come in there that, you know, not only the IT, but the monitoring and we have a NOC center. And in that NOC center, there are people there twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. And they have this huge bank of monitors where they actually. See if you're on our managed contracts, it'll pop up and then it's a red or yellow and we know that we need to. Remote in and take care of it or get somebody out there as soon as possible. Um so you're constantly monitored. And you know, we we just wanna make sure we provide you the best service possible. And I'm going to be going across the board in all the offices uh for the county. With the exception right now of the sheriffs because theirs doesn't come due till December. And I will do theirs probably instead of on the end of October and have that all in line for you by the by December. So we have kind of a mishmash right now, some are managed, some are uh under contract, full contract and maintenance. We're gonna try to bring that all together because even on the servers, you have operating systems there that they're no longer going to support. And I know the server here is I think four or five years old in the courthouse. The server in the health department is I think four or five years old as well.
Can I have the length of the contract that is expired now?
Three years.
It was three years?
Yes, we can do a five year as well.
What's the minimal?
Uh three.
Three.
Yeah. Because we, on the back end of that, we have all this licensing that we have to put advice to put you in our monitoring, our console.
So if we were to do another three year contract, but not do the upgrade universally until say next year, the year after. You'd still do that in the middle of the contract, you're just suggesting it now because of all the transition that's happening?
Well, actually, your contract that you have now, the the various ones for the different departments all expire except the sheriff. September thir- or yeah, September thirty.
September the third day?
Yes, next month.
Okay.
Yeah. So and I was just trying to get a little ahead.
Saying if we, if we do go with a three year contract for those various departments, again, we don't necessarily have. We can still do what you suggested, save the information, wipe, upgrade and re. Put everything in.
Right, we can do that, we will not support it, we will not manage it because it's old hardware. If if the hardware itself is over three years old, we can't.
So what you're saying is if if we want to renew a contract with you for three years or more, we need to upgrade all of our hardware this year?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And and it is an investment.
Yeah.
Um at the end of our contract terms on full contracts, we come in and we refresh, we refresh all the equipment. We refresh all the software.
Yeah, unfortunately, no one has that budget at hand.
I know. And it it's something that.
Well, you have to be updated to what Windows ten?
Windows ten, yeah, and a lot of your like office uh twenty nineteen will not install on Windows seven. And so we're moving a lot of the counties to Office three sixty-five for a number of reasons. The government version, you're in a special bucket, if you will, in the cloud that is even more secure than the commercial. And you get calendar sharing, you get your email, you get your all your apps, you get Skype for Business. Uh you get cloud storage. Each individual email, let's say for example, you have it on your laptop, your smartphone, maybe your desktop at home. And a tablet, you can load your copy on up to five devices using your email address per user. So in essence, if myself, I have it on my smartphone, I have it on my computer at home. I have it on my laptop at the office, I can go anywhere, I can be out at a conference and I can log in. To my Office three sixty-five, get my email, get my documents that I need to change and send to somebody else. I don't know if you're using calendaring now, I know a lot of counties are getting to the point where they do, especially judges. Where they can take that Office three sixty-five calendaring and everybody in the in their group. Can see the judge's schedules, so they know when they've got to work. Um they know when there's meetings. And like for example, in the clerk's office, Dawn's calendar would be accessible by Anna, anybody that's in that group.
Do we have anyone using that now?
Well, we don't have the capabilities, but I do your agenda on the Outlook calendar is what I do. So basically like what she said is if she, if you have access to it, you guys could see what's on your agenda at any point in time.
As it's upgraded, you do it once and it's out there. So I mean, it's it's very, very handy and we use it a lot in-house ourselves. Because if I need to know if I can get with my supervisor, I just pull up her calendar and say, okay, she's got.
So do you have the capability of bidding that for us to know?
It's part of the bid that I will be presenting you here.
Would be new hardware too?
Yes.
I just asked her more so to come to you to explain why Windows ten, because I.
And what would these be uh desktops or laptop hardware?
It whichever is required and most of the offices, it's gonna be desktops.
Like a tower like these?
Yeah. A lot of times we're now going to what they call the minis or the minis. Because they take up so much less space, they're everybody's as potent as far as the strength and the computing power that they offer. But you can mount them on the back of your monitor, it's not down on the floor and.
So what's the lifespan of that particular upgrade then?
Three years is what comes standard with the warranty. If you wanna do a five year contract, we extend the warranty on those units.
What kind of computers, like a Dell or a HP or something?
Lenovo, HP.
HP.
Either way.
And are they like networked all together like through a server and then they're like wireless server with router or how does that work?
Um most of what you have right now, you have your server here. And there are cables running out from it from your switch to all of the workstations. And to some of the copiers and printers and and firewall and everything's all included in it. Um.
Could we make that wireless? Or not a little women?
You can, but it's.
Be less workhouse.
And yeah, be less reliable um and the security becomes a bigger factor.
Yeah, people get hacked into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah, we do a lot with wireless, but most of the time, if you're dealing with large databases.
You want cabling, you get a higher speed transfer.
Yeah, only that, if that wireless would get interrupted, you could corrupt your files. We we've seen it happen with people running.
Yeah, somebody's yeah, just like they can, you can go with with the, get somebody's, you go down and get somebody free wifi, but then somebody can hack you easily.
Yeah.
I know.
So do we have any more questions right now? Because we're just running a little bit after eleven.
Yeah.
And we had to switch you out and we have someone waiting in the hall, so.
Okay.
Let's just bring information to work.
Yeah.
No, it's good information, thank you for coming.
We're gonna see you what in a week or two or?
Yeah.
Give us a proposal for uh what you would have. Do you have a different proposal or just one or what?
Well, I'm gonna present it a couple of ways.
Okay.
Uh so that you have some options.
Awesome, yeah.
And then, you know, I wanna give you the best coverage that we have to offer and then I'll give you some kinda work around.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Think big cheese tablets and yellow pens.
Yeah, that's my my dad.
Throw them computers away. We don't need them, thank you.
Well, we're in the era of double work because everybody's still doing everything on paper.
This is controlled obsolescence on this computer, number three.
Donna, are we getting a presentation from Eagle as well?
They have never come back to present anything or tell us anything. Eagle.
E- either or?
Uh well, AT&amp;T doesn't operate, but Eagle and I think Wilson Telephone Company have come and looked at all the equipment, but they've never. I've not seen or heard from them since, so I don't know.
Alright.
Wilson came in with a bid that was quite a bit lower and they had to have somebody else come back and start.
And they never caught it up?
So I kinda take it that they missed something.
Okay.
So, but.
Hey Tanner, how are you?
Oh, doing good, how you guys doing?
Bye.
Good, good. Well, I've got a few things for you today. Um first one, we talked about a Tuck Point project, um and you were kinda asking for a prioritized list.
Yes.
So I went and I put that together. Uh so I took, um when we did our bridge inspections, we came up with a maintenance list. Um so all the, our inspector Dennis Weaver, when he went and looked at them, he noted if they're missing stone, if they need repaired, that kinda stuff. So I went and sorted those and looked for all those in the maintenance list. Um so I went and identified um some structures that are needing that. Yeah.
Or is it just one or?
Yeah, I've got one, appreciate it guys.
Thanks.
Um so and then after that, uh we identified each of those. Um and the remarks portion in there is what was on the maintenance deal. I kinda looked at uh the amount of traffic. Going across each structure. Um so the first structure you can see is RS one sixty, that's long uh. RS is real secondary, it also is a major collector, uh so I think it gets a hundred and sixty vehicles a day. Um so that one's number one.
Is that out north west on it?
Yeah, and I've got some maps.
Well, that's okay.
Um if you need a map, I've got a map of each of those.
Are they marked?
Yes.
Oh, awesome, I'll check it out.
Oh, thanks, yeah.
Yeah, so uh.
Okay.
Yep, for you.
My suggestion had been to find a cluster of them that we could have someone bid out as a project where logistically, they're not. You know, transferring all their equipment and their manpower and everything. Um which it looks like we have that.
Yes, one sixty.
I don't see one sixty.
Yeah, so it's an FAS um structure, so it's actually uh like an orange color. So that cluster right there, the twenty-five, eighty-nine, eighty-six, that cluster just looks to the west of that.
So you did one sixty.
It's one sixty right there.
Alright, then that map's not right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, right there.
Oh, yeah.
They're off system or colors or different colors.
Some still in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that one was volume of traffic, um I put that down as number one. Um and then the other ones, I kinda looked at the pictures to look at like kinda the severity of it.
What is the floodline stones, is that, you mean where the edge of the water actually?
Yep.
So you'd have to wait until the water recedes to put, okay.
Right, right.
Denmark, one sixty.
Yeah, one Denmark probably, yeah.
Oh, oh, okay, on Union, is that Union?
Yeah, no, it's a den whatever Denmark, but it's a big double arc.
It's on Pike.
On Pike, yeah, that sounds better. Right next to the Denmark elevator.
Oh, okay.
One sixty.
Like downtown Denmark.
Yeah.
We're we're close to.
On the west edge of town, but yeah.
Okay, okay.
That's a big.
Okay.
And Nielsen's there.
Yep.
I see what you're saying, okay, that one and then fifty-eight, where's that's way down there. Missing stone, does it, would that be like wing walls or?
Um.
Do you know?
Trying to remember when I look at the pictures.
This is where we need to have a three one one to have pictures because we can pick that pin.
One fifty-eight down around there.
It's over here, yeah. Eighty-six is Tuck Point stabilized erosion.
At foundations.
Uh huh. Now would that be requiring dirt work on any part of the county?
Stabilize erosion at foundations. Yes, it possibly could. And I have to look at it more details, but.
Do you have pictures with that?
I've got pictures, so as uh and all the bridge files over at the ruined bridge shop or highway department, it has pictures of all of this.
Okay.
Um I I guess I should have printed them off for you guys at it.
Well, that's okay. Yeah, I I noticed you guys had pictures, I was over there before with the FEMA issues you got, you took pictures of.
Yes, so there's a bridge file for any bridge, a twenty foot or bigger, there's a file for it.
Okay.
And the state requires that the county has a file somewhere.
Sure.
Um and so when we inspect the, sorry, when we inspect the structure, we've got to take um so many photos, upstream, downstream. Of the super, the sub, that kinda stuff, and then put that in your bridge file. Um so there's pictures in each of those bridge files.
Okay.
If you guys need to reference those.
So what I would like to do is pursue getting some bids on a cluster of them. And I understand whether it's going to be an issue for some of the ones like he's saying at the water level.
Like right now, we pulled a ring.
Yeah, it's not gonna be a great time, but that doesn't mean that the person, whoever wants to bid on it, can't go out, give an assessment, get us some numbers, think about a timeframe. I mean, even if it doesn't happen.
You need a special contractor to do this type of stuff, don't we?
Uh.
Because it's Tuck Point and limestone, it's not your normal bridge crew to work, right?
Well, I was told that prior to a few years ago, prior to four years ago, let's say, five or more years ago. They would take two stone bridges or culverts every year, have them bid out and worked on. So every year they did a rotation where they picked two because i- is that sounding familiar? Okay, um since we haven't done them in a while, I was suggesting getting a map like this, which thank you Tanner for putting this together. Finding a section, which obviously we have this little place around Denmark that has quite a few, some of them with less work and more work, you know. But if we could get someone to bid on them as a group, you know, it's a. But if we could get someone to bid on them as a group, you know, it's a bigger project for that person. I know it's more of an expense for us, but we're kind of wrapping up one area and then we're not having to come back to it if they do that. Let's say we give them the year to do it.
Would this, would this be something our bridge crew guys could do, or do we need to get a special contractor for that?
Um, I would probably recommend getting someone that specializes in.
Yeah, do you know unless the people do that or?
Um, I can look back, uh, we did a project in Barton County and I could look to see who bid on that. Um, and then maybe in the past.
In the past, Den's process actually.
Then you could look, yeah, and look, we can maybe use that information.
We have some local masons.
Oh, that's fine.
And there are more, probably bigger companies, but I, I think if we get, if we name these bridges and the specifics of, do you have anything more than this as far as specifics of what needs done? When you said you did the bridge inspection, are these over twenty feet?
Um, yeah, so those are all the bridges.
The one sixty's over twenty feet too? Or is that, why is it in orange? Just because it's a different route system?
So, yeah, so all the orange ones are the FAS, or your, your major collectors, so these are your higher volume of traffic roads.
Okay.
And then all the, uh, I think that's like a bluish-green, I guess, color, um, kinda teal.
Yes.
So should the FAS ones have a higher priority of getting done?
Yeah, so that's why I put it as number one.
So we should probably.
Cause it gets.
Well, what I'm saying is you have all these within a couple mile radius.
Yeah, twenty-five.
You could do those four, they're all in a four mile circle.
Exactly. So I say we put out for bid those, but we need a little more specific instructions.
Right, yeah.
And then we can have some people bid back on it and give them a timeframe because they might need a whole year. If they have to wait for receiving the water line and then, you know.
Right, you could open it up and just say, uh, we want your begin date to be January one and you have till December thirty-one to have it completed. And then probably summertime when hopefully it doesn't rain.
Right.
And they can come in and do the bidding. So we could open it up and make a.
And they would obviously need to coordinate with some highway department personnel to do some of the dirt work that may need done along the bank sides.
Right.
So.
But if they're within a three mile circle, you could leave equipment out there.
Yep.
You could phase your work, you could make the bridge. I think that's a great idea, uh, if we ought to do that.
Okay.
At least we can try it on the Denmark thing right now.
Yes.
And see how it works.
Well, I, that link you said, the ones that are marked right there.
Those four right there. One sixty, twenty-five, eighty-nine, eighty-six.
Eighty-six, eighty-nine, twenty-five.
Yeah, those four right colors together.
And one sixty.
Yeah, yeah, one sixty definitely because that's a higher priority than that.
But those are all Tuck Points, don't work. They're all right there in one little group within a four mile.
If you, uh, yeah, Tanner, if you could come up with, uh, contractors that you know of, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
If you could, people who are specialized in doing that. Like Lexus knows some here in Lincoln, I guess. Dennis, I know Dennis Cross, but he's, well, that's what's right now, he's a, he's hurt, foot's hurt, so, I don't know.
Okay.
He couldn't get to it immediately, but he may be busy, but.
And then we probably wanna put it like in the paper and advertise it for twenty-one days or something.
Sure, make it, yeah, public.
And you're probably wanting some specs on the grout, cause the grout, you wanna make it the weaker part, you want it to fail rather than the stone to fail. Um, so.
You do, you do design that?
We've got some specs, yeah.
You do, you do a design on how to repair this stuff?
Um, we, we could spec out the grout saying, you know, this many parts of cement, this many parts of lime, this many parts of water and that.
Well, I, I think if we have some of our local people bidding, they've worked on historical projects, so they're kinda familiar with.
Right.
You know, that, the limestone.
Yeah. Yeah, so, uh.
Are you capable then of giving us pretty much a request or proposal for those four? One, two, three, four, with more specific details?
Yes, yes. So typically, like if we put out something to bid, uh, we put together like a bid package. Um, so it's got, you know, invite for the bidders and usually we pull information from that, just describing the project, so that'll go in the paper. Um, and then we have more specifics after that, um, and we can even put together a contract for them to sign, you guys to sign between you two.
Did you do this project as part of what we've been, um, contracted to you for, for the eight hours a month, or is this in addition to that?
That'll have to, that'll be in addition.
This proj, not the bid, what you've already done?
Um.
The ma, this mapping and this list.
So I've actually just done that in some evenings, um, to help you guys.
Oh, thank you.
But, uh, if we go out and do specs and all that stuff, then yeah, I'll have to put some time in.
Right.
So it's a little bit more involved than.
Right. Would you like to move forward, asking him to put together the request for proposal, that way we can get it advertised?
We asked and we pressed for proposal for the Denmark, what we call a Denmark group, those four indicated, and you can put the numbers in, I don't have.
One sixty, twenty-five, eighty-nine, eighty-six. That's on the listed numbers.
Okay, so you guys want specs, um, just kinda bid.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
Okay.
But do we?
So it has been moved and seconded to put together a request for proposal for the Denmark group of bridges. Now for discussion. I had a comment, a question in the back.
I wonder if any of those four bridges have historical connotations with that.
So, the bridge, the bridge file has a SNA, it's called, um, that we have to put in. Pretty much full of information, you can hit up web portal, and it's got a line item for if it's historical or not. Um, so we'd have to check.
Right, because that requires a certain order that the Historical Society requires you to use.
We could coordinate with the Historical Society on doing this, and you know.
Well, I, if it's listed, I don't know that these are listed on the Historical Registry. For the National Historical Registry, I think we only have that one bridge, which is the double arch on the highway, the one eighty-one, but for the state, I'm not sure there could, one of these could be listed.
Dennis Nelson that passed away that was one of, was designated by the state of Kansas to do stone work here in Lincoln County, maybe you remember. Uh, he did it and he had that, it's a certain order, my home in Lincoln, in Denmark was done with that.
I know, I mean, well, I don't know if they just require it with that.
For state historical.
It's the same thing for the courthouse here, which is part of the reason why we have the problem with steps.
And if those bridges are close to being historical, you may wanna use the same order.
If we, if they're historical then, are we, we required to, uh, go through a historical process of paperwork and all this stuff? And then also could we get grant funding to help pay for that?
Yes, but I'm gonna say that they're not registered because we had talked about going through and having someone designate what could be and what could not be. So there's, there's no harm in seeing that, you know, trying, seeing if someone could put that big work together because they're not gonna get worked on right away. I think I agree with you, we might give them the whole of twenty-twenty as a timeframe.
This is a future project, but it's good to get started on.
Well, yeah, and we need to know what kind of money we're talking out of budget or.
Right, your money.
Right.
There's another footnote, when I built my house, I did it out of native stone. And the, uh, school in Malloy sent a team down and they actually, we cut the stone, but they actually laid it as an instruction device. And they had a crew of fifteen and a supervisor that laid the stone. And it may be, there may be some advantage accrued to you or to them as an educational device to, uh, re-Tuck Point this. Cause that's one of the things that they're trying to teach. They have very few opportunities to work with native stone.
I don't know, Boy, it's still not bricklaying for the department after.
Well, they, they still do, but they don't get native stone chance very much, so there might be an opportunity to.
Yeah, and who did you say that was through?
It's the community college in Boy.
North Central Campus, Vought Technical School, the Vought Tech up there. They used to have a bricklaying, but I don't know if they still do. Because, but if they don't, Hayswood and they, you know.
We are running just a little behind on time. I'm gonna call for a vote on putting out the, having, having you put together the request for proposal.
Draft one and I can.
Yes, for our approval. Uh, those in favor, vote aye, aye. Motion carries.
Tanner, would it be helpful to have what we did in the past?
Yes, that would be helpful. Okay.
Thank you.
Great, done.
It's old, but.
Okay, so, uh, also talking about your bridges, there's four bridges that are needing annual inspections. Um, they're due the first of October, um, so I actually have a contract, and I think I brought it last month to perform these four.
Are these the fracture critical?
Um, not necessarily. So they're off system ninety-eight, one oh five, fifty-nine, and RS two forty are the four of them.
Ninety-eight.
One oh five, we actually replaced, so it'll get an inventory inspection.
But that won't require them any annual after that, right?
Um, so it'll go to every, it'll go to the, every two year of the biannual cycle, once you perform the.
So this would be the final yearly inspection after it has now been replaced, then it can be placed on this.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, ninety-eight, one oh five.
Yeah, ninety-eight, one oh five, fifty-nine, and then RS two forty are the four of them.
Okay.
Um, so here's a contract. So the state has asked if these get done before the first of October, so I think these were inspected like maybe October fourth of last year. Um, so they're starting to get pretty strict on these being done by October fourth. Um, so I guess that's why I'm bringing this to you guys. Um, so the proposals for four bridges and it's, uh, two hundred and seventy-five dollars apiece. So, one thousand, one hundred dollars.
You could do, you could get this done, you have the time to do it.
Yeah, yep, yep, so it's, uh.
Yep. That would ever do it, huh?
I thought that the annual inspection was required for the fracture critical bridges because of their status, is that not what?
So the annual inspection depends on one of the condition ratings, so if it's like a less than a three, I think they require annual inspection. So it could be fracture critical.
So the other ones that have been rated less than that have been closed. So now we're down to three, because we replaced one of five, we fixed it.
Right.
Now we're down to three with the, that rating.
Right.
That we're having annual inspected, okay. Okay. Um, I would undertake a motion to hire Kirkman and Michael to do this annual inspection by, what do we say, October first?
Yeah, October fourth, I think is what, when they were inspected last year.
I'll make a motion to, uh, have Kirkman and Michael, uh, perform this wet bridge inspection by October fourth. For these four.
Annual.
The annual.
Chairman sign that.
Yeah, I'll sign it. I'll second.
By October fourth.
So it's been moved and seconded to employ Kirkman and Michael to do the annual bridge inspection at two hundred and seventy-five dollars each, which totals one thousand one hundred and dollars. One thousand one hundred dollars, excuse me. Any further questions?
For these four, uh?
Yes.
Four bridges, ninety-eight.
One oh five, fifty-nine, and two forty, and then next year, one oh five will be removed from that list because we already worked on this one.
Okay.
So it'll go to the biannual, so it'll get, have, get inscribed every two, yeah.
Okay.
Any further questions? Uh, is the two hundred and seventy-five, is that the price for the biannual inspection also, or is that just for the?
No, the biannual's a lot cheaper because you have a lot more bridges.
Right, so this is just because it's the annual.
Right, there's only four of them, so you can kinda distribute out the few.
Gotcha. Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So I'll just need one copy and then you can keep the copy for.
Do you wanna sign?
Yes.
Give me that one you wanna give.
Well, she has one.
Well, she needs one, she signed it up.
I have to sign one, give him.
Okay.
Okay, next thing, um, is that Ry Drive Structure Replacement. She's kinda a picture, an arrow picture of it. Um, so this, this wall on the, be the southwest corner, has failed, it's fallen into the channel. Um, so I put together, the last time you asked for proposal, or kinda put it together.
I don't think I've seen this.
It's up here.
Right.
Yeah, it's kinda north of.
North of Denmark.
Uh, Ry.
Ry.
This is the one that's a mile west of.
What's the crossroad?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's.
One, what?
If you go north, this is a mile west of, uh, Highway fourteen on Ry.
Oh, so it's clearly here.
It's mileage marker one eighty-seven and turn west.
Go north of Lincoln, up to Ry Drive and go west a mile.
That's Carl Gablewin's farmstead, it used to be. He's gone, of course.
Right there, yeah.
Gene Friesen's place now.
Oh, that's in the.
Friesen, yeah, Gene Friesen.
So it's about right, right there.
I haven't looked at that.
And then here's.
The cattle crossing, that you talked about.
Cows go underneath that thing.
And I've got some more pictures, um, if you wanna see it, but here's kinda a picture showing.
That's, that's native.
Each one's got a barricade up and people go around the barricade and cross the bridge.
Do you have like a written?
Yeah, so, um, what we talked about was, there's sixty foot of right away there, uh, we actually met with the gentleman that, uh, pretty much farm, or runs cattle.
Freezen.
Yes, Freezen. Um, and he wants to keep, uh, it open for his cattle, so his cattle can go underneath the roadway there. Um, I ran some quick hydraulics and that structure's actually pretty big, um, so we can put a smaller structure in. Um, so what we were thinking is to put a, like a ten-foot tanker in from the roadway yard. Um, they've got, uh, some pressure tankers and then they've got regular tankers. Um, they come at sixty foot, so we've got sixty foot of right away, uh, so we pretty much would put the edge of the tanker right on the right away.
Re- repaired.
Um.
It'd be extremely.
Yes, it's.
Cause it's a.
It's gonna be quite a.
Massive structure there.
Steep building up.
It's pretty, and then we looked at it, and a lot of tuck boarding's gonna have to be involved and placing those stones all back, and it looks like they're already having issues. They built like a timber wing.
Yeah, I saw that.
You can see that, how they went in there and drove some like maybe timber pile and put some boards across.
I thought the capstone was pretty much rotted out in there.
Up under, I mean, it's, but it's there.
Got a gem while you're in like that, I first started pushing cows under there, must ten years.
So, uh, what an option could be is, uh, to get a tanker, sixty foot long, ten foot diameter, and place that right in there and put the edge of it.
How long?
It's sixty foot long?
It's sixty.
So there, it's like seventeen feet from the bottom, or from the roadway down to the bottom of the channel.
Yeah.
Um, so and those tankers are ten foot, so we'd have to get rid of seven foot vertically. So we do a twenty foot roadway and we slope that down, um, that's seven foot down over twenty feet, down to the edge to kinda make it safe for traveling pelvic. But that's what our kinda idea was. Um, so I, I put together contractor prices to do some of this work. Um, and I think you guys had mentioned, well, how much did the county do?
Is that closed right now?
Yes, the barricade's up.
When did they close it? Is that because of the wash where that wing wall is with the wood?
Yeah, yep.
How long, do you know how long ago it was?
Right, two months?
Yeah, at least two months. But it's, uh, people go around the barricades to get across it.
So you can see the roadway when you approach it?
Oh, yeah.
Getting into the roadway.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that, yeah, that's bigger on the top than it was on the bottom.
That's a big, deep, deep drop off, huh?
It's a, it's a steep field.
Seventeen feet from the channel to the roof.
Figured out, yeah.
Okay.
There's nothing that you could just line that in the way that it is, the, the dimensions that it is, without having to do all that resurfacing and tearing out and.
I'm no expert, but I don't think you can say that over any way, shape, or form. Go out and look at it, it's, it's really rotted down.
Well, no, I see, like all the masonry was not done for decades and decades, so of course it's gonna be.
But it started to collapse.
I understand. But what I'm saying, okay, so what if you pulled the roof off of it and poured concrete walls just inside, left the stone wall, poured the concrete walls inside the stone walls and then put some other kind of, um, layment on the tops.
Said you would pull the arch off and then put beams across and then extend this out probably to sixty foot.
Uh-huh.
Um.
Can you do poured concrete walls if you framed in?
You could put a box and then tie a box into that old arch.
I'm just saying, it seems to me like half of the work is gonna be dismantling it, getting it out of the way and reshaping everything instead of just using the hole that's already there, if we try to, if we try to minimize that hole.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we were thinking pretty much take all that out, um, bring in the tanker, set the tanker in place. Um, we probably bury it a foot so we can make a, like a dirt floor for the cattle, so they're not slipping on the, on the middle. Um, and then we would put, uh, sheet piling wings in. And, uh, see, I don't know if this wing extended far enough, so we would extend wings all the way into, over to here.
Yeah, I understand.
So we probably put four or fifty foot of wing.
There's a bank side there that you don't want to slide, that's what's happening anyhow.
Yeah, so we would.
But can you not put in the sheet piling?
So how, you almost need something square to put that sheet piling up to, and then this is arched. So if you put sheet piling here, you're gonna have that void right here. And then you're gonna have seventeen foot tall sheet piling, and to get that deep enough without it falling over is gonna be.
Yeah.
We've never done it over like ten foot.
I think what you recommend, probably we're gonna go.
Best engineering.
What are we talking, price wise? Where?
Um, so, and this is contractor prices, I know we discussed uh having the county do some of this work, but I, I think they can do most.
Part of it and the removal, I, we might even have some people that are interested in the stone.
Right, and so like the removal of this and the structure, um, the county could do that, uh, clearing and grubbing, they could do that, common excavation.
Do you have three copies of that?
Just one, so contractor prices, uh, with a ten percent contingency, about two hundred and twenty-six thousand. And so if the county did, you know, a lot of this, they could, they could probably save a lot of money.
How much is that uh, that railroad car?
So it's about, let's see, eighteen thousand.
Do they deliver those here?
Yeah, yep, yep, so that's delivered cost. So like, uh, we had L and M come in and drive the pile over at one oh five, just west of town. Um, so we'd probably have L and M come in and drive the pile, um, that tanker's also probably going to take a crane to set in place.
You'd have to wait, well, they're more rent a service, did you do that before, rented a service out of Slade?
I think Michael did.
Michael, yeah, probably.
May I see that?
Well, they have to.
Yeah, and you can have that.
They've been told that twenty times, haven't they?
Yeah, so, and I even talked to the guys to see what, you know, they're capable of.
So just the removal of these existing structures, for example, ten thousand, excavation was two thousand.
So we could probably, count, we, ourselves could probably take out that structure and then set prep, do the prep work for. And you guys would, you'd be there to help uh make sure it's correctly done and everything, or you certify that or?
We could.
Yeah.
What is the difference between piles steel, the, you have twelve by fifty-three, and then you have piles corrugated galvanized eighteen inch?
So that, that's a twelve, twelve gauge galvanized steel, um, that stuff's twelve gauge, so it's fairly thin. Um, so that would act as your wall, but to support that, we'd put some H pile, say HB twelve by fifty-three's, we'd probably drive those every like six foot and then put a whaler between them, um, pretty much two C channels, and then you drive your sheet piling that interlocks in behind that. So the H pile's going to keep that sheet piling from wanting to bend out. And then those are just estimated linear footages of each of those, so. So.
I just, I, not to be so negative of what I'm always accused of being, but if we're going to look at two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars every time one of these comes up, I mean, do we know how many of these in the county need addressed, there are dozens, we're going to have to look at this kind of stuff carefully, I mean.
And we, yeah, we could add up the structural parts of that, so probably driving the.
Material specifically.
Or like the H pile, driving the H pile's probably going to take a crane and a driver, driving the sheet piling.
Well, that in and of itself is over a hundred thousand, because you've got the piling at sixty-four thirty-seven, and another ten thousand for this whaler steel, you called it. And the tank car itself is twenty thousand, so you're up over a hundred and.
Yeah, and then if you guys could watch steel prices, maybe purchase some of this and just have it ready for them.
I mean, I'm not against the concept of the tank car and all of that, but.
Well, if you was wanting to fix the existing structure, maybe that'd probably be more expensive.
Yeah, I think, I think this is probably the cheapest, one of the cheaper options to.
The county certainly could take out the old structure, if you're going to do that, clean that up and have that ready to go.
Right, right.
We have everything we need to do that, so the contractor doesn't need to do that.
Yeah, but you're only talking about ten to twenty thousand of the top, of the cost, yeah.
That's ten percent of it.
And then like the excavating, dirt work.
Yeah, that's.
Packing the dirt back in place and all that stuff.
Then when that's completed, you did the inspection to make sure it's correct, or?
Yeah, I can come by on a monthly trip.
Does the state have an inspector come down too to?
Since it's, it's, this is a less than twenty foot, so it's a culvert, so this.
They don't.
State really doesn't care.
So how do you go about doing an RFP for bidding if we want to remove some of this? Like a certain line items, like we'll remove the structure ourselves, we'll provide traffic control for five thousand dollars, I mean, how, can you just do an RFP with the specifics of, just like you did have them do the piling on one oh five and then we did the rest?
Yeah, yeah, so we can.
And what, what bridge did we just apply for and we just had you reapply?
Yeah.
That was that one over on, one of, by Rocky Hill Road over by uh. Very well, yeah, that little one, that little bridge.
So what's our estimate?
Is that twenty footer or less? That's close to being.
Yeah, so we, we submitted, so you're talking.
Sorry, I'm jumping ahead, but I want to look at money, so.
Right, right, and that's, that's a good question. So we submitted uh two applications, one for off system one oh seven, southern port site, and then also off system one twelve.
Well, you, we approved one twelve, right, last week.
To be added to, so that we had two in a row.
Because you had to get that in here quick.
So what are we looking at for our portion of the cost?
So each of these has, the application has kind of an estimated um local share.
Yeah.
Um, so here are these, so one oh seven, um, the local share would be, be about a hundred and twenty-three thousand.
For one twelve?
For one, that's one oh seven.
Seven, okay, and then.
And then one twelve um was a hundred and thirty-six thousand, local share.
One twelve. Those are four replacements?
Yep.
And so, that makes nine, that makes two hundred and fifty-nine thousand.
So that'll be, you only get to build one of those.
Oh, okay, so it'll be either or.
Yeah, so.
One oh seven or one twelve.
Right, right, so they've got a, it's competitive, so you know, all the counties are submitting these, um, and so they look at them. Um, I think they've got like eight million dollars that they allot to the program uh for this federal fiscal year, and um they pretty much rank both of these, and so, um, and so, uh, yeah, so they'll just pretty much take out, there's like a KDOT share in there that they'll pull out of that eight million, um, but they'll rank them, and if, and if one of them or both of them comes in in that eight million dollars, then uh we can choose which one we want to do.
Is this going to be a continuing program at one time, one year thing?
Yeah, so it, it, every year, they usually, um, so they've been doing this for probably five to ten years now. So it typically comes out every year, they have a call for projects, which was a few months back. But that's got some more details on the costs, and I think their location map, and I got some letters of support from some of the locals and that kind of stuff.
Right, but I want to see what we have in the funds.
Yeah.
Don, you can probably look that up faster than I can, but we need to know special bridge balance and, because I'm saying, before we move ahead with this culvert project for two hundred and some thousand, we have our portion of the share for these cost replacements to consider, and when, when did they notify us of that?
So um, probably this fall, you'll get a letter saying if you were selected, yeah. Yep, yep, so this fall, probably November.
Okay.
Um, and so that's now going to be, so the county's got to pay for the design, geotech, any right away, and any utilities. Um, so it usually takes a year for all that to happen, um, so if we got selected in November, um, and then we start to design.
It would be next year's budget.
It would take a year to design it, and, because KDOT typically sets budgets, or uh, sorry, schedules for each of these. Um, so it'll be a year, so it'll be twenty twenty we would design, and in twenty twenty-one, probably early spring, it'd get let to a contractor. Um, and so really, the money would kind of be spread out. So you'd probably have the engineering design fees for the next year, and the following year would probably be the construction, construction engineering costs, and that's an eighty-twenty split. So the.
If we don't get selected, then we'll just, we'll re-submit.
Yeah, we'll just keep these, um, and they'll probably come back and.
We re-submit the next year, then?
Yeah, you can, so like one oh seven, we submitted last round, the county had got one the year before that, so typically you don't get them back to back. Um, so it's nice to submit, uh, so we can put on the application, we submitted last year, and you didn't select us, we're still interested in.
Okay, so for example, in our special bridge, as of the end of June, through June, I think I believe this was, which was our fifty, it's halfway through the year before, we still have almost what we put in there, which, which would be close to, well, it would be the remaining rollover, I guess, that looks like it's over two mil, I don't know how we did that, Don. How do we start out with more than two mil in there? Can you, can we just roll over what it was from the last year, I thought the budget in.
Cash carryovers regardless, you can levy two mils.
Okay, okay, so, so what we ended up with last year was a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred in there, and we still have a hundred and eighty-six, one seventy-two. But that special bridge fund is not even a cutter, what we're talking about with the culvert replacement on Ry.
On that Ry Bridge, I'd recommend we block the road completely, to go around that uh is a mile and a half, and the first mile of that is minimum maintenance. So, but that bridge is unsafe for people to drive on it, they're going around the barricade across that bridge anyway, they shouldn't be doing that. We really need to block that so you can't, and force them to go around, but if we force them, then we're going to have to do some work on it. Yeah. Yeah.
Whose route, whose route is that?
I don't have any idea who that is.
You mean Greater?
Yeah, that's who would be responsible to make sure that happens.
I don't know.
We're going to have to change that minimum maintenance road, maintain roads for the.
Kind of going to upgrade the detour around it.
Unfortunately, no bridges out here, a couple of culverts.
We know who's responsible for what, I don't know.
So it's an easy detour to come around, but we're going to have to block that bridge, you're going to be out of the bridge.
Yeah.
You shouldn't be driving across that.
You can see people have been driving down there, did.
So, I mean, are we going to move forward on this culvert issue is what I'm getting at, because we don't have enough in our special, special bridge to do just that project. We do have this half of the year to determine a project that could probably be bid out and worked on before the end of the year.
Remember this, this one you in, culvert?
When you look at this report that gives you the left, the year-to-date expenses and then what's left in the account, what I'm saying is we don't even have enough, and we didn't, two mils isn't even enough, which is what we're allowed to levy for the special bridge account, plus, Don said whatever the cash carryover was, that's why we had a hundred and eighty-seven in there. But that's not even enough to address the culvert, that particular Ry, Ry road.
I don't know that we'd have a problem if we delayed that for a year, except we'd have the mile and a half detour, but, you know, we, we don't have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we, we just don't have it.
Well, because what I'm looking at is, even if we don't, um, Don, are we allowed to have any amount of cash carryover in there?
Well, you have cash carryover, but if you don't expend it, then it reduces the amount of levy that you need. It just, you, you just can't levy more than two mil, or two mils.
Mil for that particular fund.
Yes. Because you can carry over as much as you want, you just have to budget that you're going to spend it, so that you get the full two mils to fund the budget, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, because I'm saying, we're going to be looking at also doing this tuck point, stonework project, masonry, I'll call it, for the limestone bridges too. I don't like how that's set up, then you can't separate your expenses for your specific bridge projects.
Well, we could, we could identify a project and track by project code.
Okay.
If that's what you so desire, or their permit desires, it just happens to be that that's not what they've done before. We could even set up a lineup, and it's just a particular bridge project, and we code for that bridge project alone out of that.
I think that's what we should do for this, so we can track that, because we, the continuing commissions should keep on track with that, because this is why we're looking at this issue. I mean, anyone can see that there was no tuck pointing, no real maintenance done, and so then you have all this deterioration, which then costs twenty-five times.
Well, you can all determine where the priorities have had, what to do, you know?
But that's why someone needs to be keeping track of the list of what needs done before it becomes a complete disaster. I don't, Don, I, I don't know what other line item we've been pooling payments for culverts like that big, I mean, our culvert line items only.
The culvert comes out of Roden Bridge, it's not considered.
I know, I'm looking here, but the culvert actual line item is only forty-five thousand.
That's what they've just purchased with, so they don't track, I mean, they probably tracked down there how much it costs to do a culvert replacement, but we just buy the culverts, and they normally buy the culverts in bulk, so that's what that line item is.
I know, but I'm saying, if we were to actually, I mean, this would be contractual, I suppose, would be a total, but where are the uncontractual?
Total contractual, where did that start? Normally our guys do it, so that would be coming out of forty-one hundred, it would be coming out of what they needed dirt gravel then.
Yeah, but if we don't do that, that's what I'm saying, but how would we pay for it if we don't do that? Because are we using contractual to pay for our portion of the cost share bridges, is that how we're, that we've been coding that?
We use, the cost share bridges comes out of the bridge fund, if they're just replacing a culvert, is this a bridge or is this a culvert?
Culvert.
Culvert.
So if it's just a culvert, it'll come out of the Roden Bridge Fund.
Yeah.
And they would use whatever they have for costs, so if you need to buy the tanker, that cost would come out of the culvert fund. When you pull it out, if you had to hire somebody to bring in a crane, then you would take the crane out of contractual to, employees' wages would come out of personal services. We don't track like that through AP, we just pay the bills, that's what their star project does.
So here's what I'm getting at, contractual services total was only two hundred thousand, culvert line item total was only forty-five thousand. So just those two line items alone don't have enough to cover what we would need to pull out of there for that particular project, do you see what I'm saying?
If he provided a, a cost estimate correct, I mean, how much of the cost would be our cost and how much of the cost would be?
Ten thousand, fifteen thousand out of two hundred and twenty?
And that would be if you contracted the entire project done?
Except for the removal, I'm, I'm counting us, I'm counting on us and our labor doing the removal of the current structure. Then you want to talk about another two hundred, almost two hundred thousand dollars worth of contractual and culvert expenses, because, okay, culvert expenses technically, that would also be the wing walls, which would be the the uh metal purchase, which is ten thousand, just for the steel, and then you have the driving the piling, which would be contractual, and
Right.
So it's still more than what we have in contractual and culverts to pull out of, is what I, that's where I'm getting at, I mean, where are we going to pull this money from, is what I'm getting at. And I understand you're saying it doesn't have to be done this year, we can block it off until next year, but we're going to run into the same exact problem, because we already have our budget set hypothetically.
But at least we won't lose our uh authority on the two mil levy, if we have the money put in some shoebox somewhere, then we can still keep our two mil levy.
Well, when you build your budget, so let's say you have the hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars that you haven't spent this year. When you build your budget, you're going to increase your budget to account for some of that cash, so then that way, you're still levying the two mils because you're using some of your cash carryover, you're not allowed to transfer out of the special bridge fund. So you can't set it aside someplace else, but you have to know what you're budgeting in order and what your expenditures are. So you basically earmark those expenditures and you know, but you have to make sure that the person that is, that you're hiring knows that that's what you're intending on doing.
Right, which is where I'm getting at, I don't, you see how we can address all of that? In the same year, is what I'm getting at, so we're, we're still looking at these projects not starting until twenty twenty.
Yeah, we're just going to have to push them off other years, we can't afford it all one time.
No, that's a fact a lot, I don't see any problem.
But I think if we get this re- request for proposal for the masonry work on the stone structures, we can get a number for that and earmark our express. I think we have enough, and I'm totally guessing, because I don't know, but I would think that would be enough to cover those projects out of the special bridge fund, of what we have left for this year.
We could also, like in the, you know, in the bid docs, we could say, okay, uh, we want you to do RS one sixty, and then we could add alternates and see what bids come in. So if you have a hundred thousand dollar budget, we just see where bids come in. And if it's only good enough to do the first one, then we'll just award the first one.
Request that they separate their bid by those, we're, we're giving them all four structures because they're all in a vicinity, but just request that they separate their line items, if we have to cut one, we cut one.
Yeah, so typically I have a base bid, which would be the one sixty, and then add alternate, so the add alternate one will be whatever.
Fifty knots or whatever.
And add alternate two, and add alternate three.
That way, that way we could get some of them done, with the budget we have.
So let's push this Ry culvert discussion off
Yeah.
For a few weeks, until we, till you get the request for proposal done, and we understand we're paying you to do that as a separate project, it's not part of what you've been putting your time in.
Right, so I just usually set up a mon code, and then we just do it by the hour, but we try to be quick and efficient, so.
Sure, sure. Is everyone in agreement with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, what else do you have?
We made a motion.
No, I, we already made the motion for the request, I was just trying to address the Ry culvert as well, because that's not.
That's just too expensive to have it all at the one time.
Right.
And in the meantime, do you want me to let, like Johnny? And in the meantime, do you want me to let, like Johnny and Stephen know that they need to put better barricades?
I, I really think they need to close that road.
Yeah.
And then, i- if they do, then they need to see what they need to do on that minimum maintenance bypass. Start there at Surprise School and come around. There are no bridges and no weight restrictions, so it's not gonna interfere with any harvest trucks. It's gonna be inconvenient for Jeff and Kitty Meyer and probably nobody else. Because everybody else could come down the airport road where they can go north and come across Ash Road.
Okay.
Uh, it'll be inconvenient for Gene. He'll have to go around and get the other field. But that's, life goes on.
That's probably, I would say Emmett Hogg's route right now.
I don't know.
It was, it was Mr. Ward and then I think they replaced him. So, I'd assume. Because he's kind of from Denmark all the way over to north of Lincoln there.
Okay, you ready for the next deal?
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, we talked about the off-system bridge program. Um, there's actually another program. Um, and if you guys wanna, you know, think about it or review the documents. So it's a KLBIP. So it's Kansas Local Bridge Improvement Program. Um, they did it a few years back. And then they stopped it for a few years while it was very popular. Um, so now they pretty much, KDOT announced it, that it's back out. Um, the applications are due the middle of September. Um, so what it is, it's for, um, structures that are less than, or bridges, um, less than a hundred vehicles a day. So low-volume roads and structures about twenty to fifty foot in length. Um, the county can apply, and if they get selected, they can get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a bridge. Um, if they close another one, they can get additional fifty thousand.
It's not based on a cost share?
So it's, it is a ninety-ten split. So, um, the county would have to come up with ten per, ten percent.
But the, the maximum state share is a hundred and whatever.
It could be a hundred and fifty if you close a bridge. So we've got a couple of projects, like the watershed areas, we're gonna put some pipes in. And so they aren't gonna be bridges anymore. So that was my way of thinking is we'll remove it from the inventory. It's closed. It's not a bridge anymore. Um, and then get our, another fifty thousand dollars and then we could get two hundred thousand dollars.
Perfect, yeah.
Um, so they're for about twenty to fifty footers. Um, I went and sorted the data and kind of took a look at some of the options. So it's gotta be structurally deficient. Um, and so it's for, so there's also the off-system bridge program. So that's only for the minor collectors and local roads, the off-system bridges. This you can use towards the major collector acts, with the major collector. So I went and stored the data and RS two forty came up number one. Um, so here's, here's the data. I'll give you guys lots of handouts.
The address.
But two forties, while you're, you're gonna inspect coming up here, right?
Yeah, two forty, uh. So if you guys are interested, um, I do application for free. Um, we could apply into that program.
And if we did that and had it fixed, then we can take that off of our annual inspection list too, right?
So two forty.
You're gonna, you were gonna inspect that.
Yeah, there you go.
So that would remove two from our four of annual inspectors, which, I mean, that's the minimum cost rate, right? But it's still. So, what is, some of these bridges that have been closed because of their efficiency rating? I guess if we, if we only had four on the list that needed the annual inspection, are there any of those that have been closed that should have been on the annual inspection list that just, or were they, I don't, I'm not sure where you cut, where you draw that line. Where does that happen?
I don't know if some were closed back when they first did this to get that for fifty thousand. I don't, I don't know.
I would like to look at some of that. Because there are a few, by me, where I live and some farmers that have asked, you know, I've seen them, there's nothing about them than other, other than maybe the decking is so warped and just old. But the structure itself, the substructure, is not deteriorated. It's either, there's one that's like all steel beam kind of put together and it just has wooden, um, whatever you call that, the flanking. And then there's another one that has, almost in perfect shape, amazingly, stone pillars. And, but the, again, the decking itself is so warped. But that one's not closed, but it's definitely needing addressed.
So that's just whatever's in the KDOT's bridge inventory is the list of those items. Um, if they've been closed.
They're not on there.
Yeah. So like if you guys closed one, I think they put up some red signs and barricades. Um, then you can take a picture of that and say it's closed. And you can actually email the state and get it removed from the inventory. So you guys don't have to do inspections on a closed structure. Um, so it saves you guys some money there. Um, and to close a bridge, so maybe there are some load ratings done on them. Um, so the lowest you can post a bridge is three tons. So if someone did a load rating on it as part of some program and it came as one ton, then yeah, you're gonna have to close it. And then some counties do just remove them from the inventory so they don't have to pay an inspector to look at them and save them some money there. Um, so that could have been done. Um, trying to think to figure out how we could figure all that out, why they closed them.
Well.
That, you may have a bridge file, like an archived bridge file we can maybe pull. And I don't know if.
Do you?
If we had the three eleven program, we could just punch it in.
Yeah, that will be up and running, I'm sure. So do we wanna move forward with two forty? Do you think that's a?
And I could always do.
For the application. We need to approve him to do the application. So do we wanna go ahead and go with what this?
I think so.
And I could, you know, bring the application. I could show you what your local match would be, um, before the September ten deadline. So try to come early.
If it's ten percent and then ninety percent is a hundred and what?
Hundred fifty thousand.
Yeah, hundred fifty and you could get another two hundred thousand.
Could be up to two hundred total, you said with fifty. So we'd have to pay ten.
But that's being ninety percent, so we can afford that.
We could, we'd have to pay twenty thousand.
Yeah, but we can do that. We can definitely afford that. I would say we'd move forward with that.
A twenty-three footer.
Where's, where's one oh one? Let's look at the location. So just to see. Cause that's the next one listed. Where is one oh one?
Oh.
It's on your map probably.
Yeah, you have to look at the map. I didn't.
That doesn't even have a road or throughway on each side right there, one oh one. It's north of Lincoln on, um, Oak. That doesn't, that doesn't even cross through. And then the next one is sixty-five. Sixty-five. Okay, that's the one I was talking about with the, that really needs the.
That one's west of Silver.
Yeah, that's.
So that's a longer structure, if I remember right. So a hundred and thirty-eight. So this program's really twenty to fifty footers.
Well, let's move forward with the two forty. I would entertain a motion to give him permission to do the application for, for the bridge RS two forty.
It sounded like a motion. I mean, I'll second it.
I move to, to approve Tanner US submitting the application for RS two forty.
Want me to send you a draft, see if you can, see if we got, I'll send it.
We got, is there a second?
Yes.
Mr. gave him a second. Under discussion, we have an email now. It's LC.
Okay.
Commission at Lincoln C O K S dot com.
C O K F dot com.
That way when you send it, it'll come to all of us and then we'll just keep it archived in that as a, it'll be county-owned.
Yeah, so I can send you application and stuff.
Then you don't have to send it to any one of the three of us individually.
I think I've sent it to Dawn and then she's.
Yes, yeah. But that'll come directly to us and that'll kind of bypass her from having to do that extra work.
Okay, that's good to know.
So, any further discussion? What is the application called?
It's a KLBIP. So it's Kansas Local Bridge Improvement Program.
Don't even talk to your form there.
Okay. Right there, see.
Uh, so those are gonna be the applications we did for the off-system program. Um, the KLBIP is actually, here's all the information on it.
Okay.
Okay.
KLBIP.
Okay, I will call for a vote. Those in favor, vote aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Here's information on that program.
That's for the cost share program.
This is gonna stay eighty-twenty.
Okay.
This is ninety-ten.
Do we need to sign these improvements today?
We already did here with the application.
Those are just copies for you.
We improved him adding that second.
We did ten of one.
All right. Anything else? I called you on, uh, about, uh.
Yeah.
One, one grader driver wanted to talk to you. Did you get with him?
Yeah. So we're gonna go look at the landslide this afternoon.
Okay.
Um, and I kind of quickly ran by the bridge by the park or.
The park, yeah.
It's a culvert by the park.
What'd you say to that?
So, uh, it looks like it's a fort and there's some water in it. Um, I didn't have my wader with me. So I didn't make it down in the water. It was good fishing. Um, it's a fourteen-foot span. So it's less than twenty. So it's a culvert. Um, so it's not part of any programs. So I don't know if you can really apply and get any grant funding for it. Um, it looks like it had seed channel as beams with a concrete deck on top of it. Um, it looks like on the northeast wing, um, there's some scour going on. And part of the deck is starting to collapse on the button. So it's getting, it's not in real good shape.
Are you in touch with Norm Bowers?
Yeah.
Would you mind, as part of what you do for us monthly, to give him a call about that in particular? Because, here's the issue. And I think you were not here, we were discussing it earlier. The city, at some point in time, redrew their boundaries and excluded the blacktop, I'll call it, I don't know what kind of surface that is, from, from eighteen.
Okay.
Down along the road and it cuts back in where that piece of pa, uh, farm ground is.
Mm-hmm.
And then across the road and then back up the other side. So the city park and all that is basically adjacent to that road. But they, they kind of cookie cuttered out that section of road specifically. And I was reading on some of these, uh, you can look up KSA twelve, six ninety-three.
Okay.
And then there were some other ones, if you get into that, into those statutes. But we were kind of wondering what our obligation is. And I know what we are able to do is to create a cost-sharing agreement. Maybe we could provide equipment and manpower. They could pay for materials or something like that. Because there's gonna be a question as to who actually owns that road. And from what I read, if the city changed their boundary lines to basically exclude a piece of road, which then becomes the county's, the way I'm reading it is the county had to agree to that. So I don't know if any of that paperwork exists. But if you would ask maybe Norm what, how that works.
There wasn't.
What we should specifically be researching, what to look for.
There was a question whether, because the city is, for park going north is city, but then right on that ditch on the south side, I think going south is county, cause there's farm ground there.
So the city has a park.
Yeah. So whose responsibility is that bridge?
The city has a cemetery too. So it's unclear exactly where the city-county boundary lies along there.
Did I misunderstand then, Don? Is the, did they come around the, with their drawing of the city limits, did they come around the, um, cemetery and down along the road all the way to include the bridge and then go back up? Or did they, they just took out one chunk of the road where it attach, where it's connected to that farm ground and where the bridge is?
I believe, I, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. Because the state is responsible for a portion of that. Because it's an entryway onto the state highway. But I'm not really sure. All I know is in the past, road supervisors have said both North Street and Lincoln Avenue is technically the city's because they can't just vacate.
That's what I read.
The portion of the road that is, is adjacent to get out of the ability to take care of the road, if that makes sense. I, I'm not speaking very well because I'm not a hundred percent sure. It's been so long ago.
Well, and it's all in question as to who owns it. And I think the county would be willing to do especially cost sharing with, for us to take on full responsibility for it.
Well, that's just it. Should we work with the city? Is the city partly responsible? Or is it totally all the county's responsibility? That's the question I have.
Maybe you could talk to Norm for us.
And I can, I think, I'd just send Norm an email, see to you guys and kind of explain the situation and kind of ask his opinion on exactly.
Please. I appreciate that.
Cause he does stay more up to date on the state statutes.
Right. Yeah, he could, he might even tell us where to look so that we can read specifically. Cause I was just kind of searching.
Yeah. But, you know, if the county could buy some concrete boxes and then, or the city could buy them and the county could set them, something like that.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think we're opposed to doing, working together on it. But we do need to establish some legality.
Right.
Anything else for us?
Got a permit for a structure, but it'll be with the, the highway department. And I think that's it for now.
Okay. Did you have a question?
Yeah, relating to this issue on the road here in the city park. That will end up in a court. I've seen it happen before. If you read the news, this happened in Slime. They were arguing over who cooked, just to protect them. The city wanted to expand their city limits, but they didn't wanna take possession and maintenance of the road. So the city sued the county and the county's, county sued the city. It ended up in the Pika, in court.
Hopefully it won't happen.
It's already been decided here. We just don't know what the decision is.
It'll go to the court.
Okay.
Okay, did we have anything else?
I'm gonna have one, Don.
Oh, I have one more thing. That's fine. Well, we'll recess for a quick minute if you can give us time. Uh, what I would like is to re-contact the state so that we can finish the reclamation on the pit. What is that big pit on eighteen?
Block pit?
The block pit. We had correspondence with their attorney. And then I spoke with the, one of the landowners. And I think there was a misunderstanding there. The attorney had been requesting that we apply more topsoil. I spoke to the landowner who said there never was a lot of topsoil there. They just wanna be able to get in there and do whatever they wanna do with it. Which right now, it's all tied up and limbo because we haven't had the state come and approve our reclamation of it. So is that something you could follow up on?
Yeah. So do you have a permit? Or do you have a copy of that permit? Cause you probably have a permit for the.
Do you remember what?
And so is there an address or a contact person? Or is it DWR?
I think I might have something because I kind of remember seeing that. So.
We had already been contacting them about doing it. But they hadn't come out because of the weather or there was some reason that they hadn't come out to finish. Because what, we have responded to the attorney and says, look, we will do everything according to whatever the state says. So when they come out to inspect it, to close it, if they say we have to do X, Y, and Z, we will do that. Well, the state hasn't finished that process with us. Therefore, they can't utilize their own land because it's still tied up. And according to them, what we thought is that, I told them what we thought is that they wanted more topsoil. And we said, we put back whatever was there. I don't believe anything had been really removed. We didn't have it used for topsoil anyway. But they were under the impression that they're just waiting on it to be finished. Not necessarily that we have to add more material of any sort.
Right. So you're waiting, you're wanting to get an update from them on where they're at with the inspection.
We want the state to come out and finalize and, and give us that go-ahead that it's done. Once it's done, then we can tell the landowner that we, you know, it's theirs again and there's no further need for any kind of changes or anything like that. I think that's all I had. Do you have anything else?
No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you for all of that.
Thanks for helping us on this.
If you need anything, just.
Yeah, I'll call you. Thank you.
Oh, and you were gonna look at the landslide, you said? Is that, what, what were you gonna look at?
At the.
Um, yeah, there's, I've got one two eightieth. There's a landslide there.
That one there, yeah. Yeah, one of the, uh, our grader men, uh, I can't remember his name anyways.
Ron?
Ron Sutton. He called me and had this concern up there by Barker about the situation. And so, and he's hot, an engineer, which Tanner should be. So I called Tanner and asked if he could look at that. You got with Mr. Sutton. And you were gonna go get with him on that. Cause there was an issue up there that you should probably deal with.
Okay.
Yeah. So we, we submitted to FEMA. Kind of Michael took pictures with all the, the tablets, GPS coordinates. So one of the days I was down, he gave me all the photos. So we sent a map of all the damages to FEMA. And I think he's trying to take some final photos. And then this one's kind of like, how do we actually address it? So we're gonna look at today, figure out how much is on private, how much is on the county right-of-way, and kind of come up with a game plan.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Have a good one.
Yep, thank you.
If you would give us five minutes, we'll just recess for. Ten?
Busy room. Hi. Had our department news this morning. What they got going at the. Trump for the pocket.
Oh, yeah, I have too.
Numerous, numerous countries.
This is back in the six-four.
I wonder.
I got to walk to one of them.
No, they don't let me. I mean, they.
But I have such a tremendous military power.
China is a big deal. They have a lot of, a lot of money and a lot of things.
I pretty much stay in touch with all that stuff.
Too many handouts. Had too many handouts.
Oh, yeah.
Don't we steal other people's chairs and come back?
No, there's nobody here.
Okay.
No, because we.
Goes down there.
Goes down there and we eat.
I was gonna say, we can swipe switch.
Those are empty down there.
This one's empty.
No, I jumped, first jumped down there.
This is empty. Two empties down there.
There's, do you want me to call back?
Yeah.
I'm afraid if I go back and call over here. I'm not sure this is even really working. Yeah, that's, yeah.
Get home pretty good, you said.
Oh, yeah.
You've never seen an obvious square like this.
Okay, your fifty minutes are up, next.
I'll be quick.
We should have charged admission today.
Yeah. I don't have anything real interesting to say, but it's real. They're coming.
It used to be, in the Pentagon, the weaker your stories, the more people you had to come with, so this looks like a pretty weak story coming up here.
That's why I asked.
Yeah.
You know, Jim, I find it amazing that anybody's brave enough to drive over that bridge.
It'd be silly if you got out and looked underneath it.
Well, you know, Beverly went out there and just walked up and looked at it, and she was gonna, she goes, wow, wow, I go, I walked across, forget it, I'm, you know, it just, to me, I can't leave somebody to drive.
Well, if you look underneath, you can see all the keystones are loose and falling down, that tells me that I don't.
I didn't go down underneath, but I, I just.
It wouldn't be early and what you're playing.
Cause everybody was talking about it, so I drove out, parked way back and walked down.
It's not that big a deal to go around that quarter.
I was gonna say, I, well, I don't. I know there's one road out there that's kind of rough, but.
Well, it's just minimum maintenance, hadn't been graded in years, so they just need to grade it, smooth it out and ready to go.
Okay, on the agenda, we have a health department.
I am just reporting on some emergency management stuff today. There's a copy of emergency management state level contact stuff, that might be helpful.
Yes, thank you.
In the interim. And I did have these regulations about each jurisdiction shall establish a, a disaster agency and provides for an appointed coordinator to head the agency, but I don't, I don't see anywhere in either of these. One is the adjutant generals, and the other one, um, is the Kansas statutes.
Oh.
That says the amount of time, did you get the same thing I got, maybe?
Well, the forty-eight, nine twenty-nine?
Yes.
Okay, those were the two.
You have a copy of that?
Yeah. I haven't given.
Kansas Adjutant General's Department. I just gave it, and I don't see. Like, I don't, I don't know that you need, how you need to appoint someone or not appoint someone in the interim. But there's the statutes, I'll let you guys.
So the phone call that I added, that you guys will need to call KDEM back at one o'clock, is he basically gave me these statutes and said that you guys need to appoint somebody today as interim emergency manager, and you need to provide the state with a proclamation today, stating such, so. And he can tell you more about that at one.
I know absolutely nothing about that, so, but I did find those statutes in my pile of stuff, so. Two thousand eighteen ENPG money was received last week, Dawn, and you got that right, so, for two thousand eighteen. Um, what's confusing to me, and KDEM works a year behind almost, so the end of July, the application for two thousand nineteen came out, and it's due September fifteenth. And I've kind of looked for it, and I threw it, and looked through some of the requirements, and when I was at the mitigation meeting last week, all the emergency managers were grumbling that we get this application so late in the year, and then they change the requirements, and we only have four months left to meet the requirements. So there was a huge conversation about that. Um, I think I could fill out the application by looking at last year's, except for there's a list of duties that were done throughout two thousand nineteen. And I would just have to dig a little bit to see what they put in last year's, and, and if I could find this year's information, like what drills and exercises and all those kind of things. I know David has it in Web E O C, and I have, I can get into Web A E O C and look at that. But I need to find out, since, and that would be a question for Eric, that I didn't ask, um, at the meeting, is if we don't have an emergency manager right now, even though it's two thousand nineteen money, and we did have an emergency manager, if we can even apply. I don't, I don't know. I'm confused that they're a whole year behind. Kind of, when you budget and do all that stuff, it makes no sense to me.
But are they on the October to whatever, September, June?
No, 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 January one starts their new year. They're that far behind.
Oh.
I know. They, they work a year behind, so. So, I will try. I will come back next week and tell you if, if I need a lot more help to do it, or I just can't figure it out. But I will try to call some of the other agencies and talk to them too. I just know there was a lot of, nobody has their application in, because they're not sure if any of them are gonna meet the requirements for the exercises, because they changed the rules. So, it's kind of strange. David had applied for, um, some grants for the Hunter Siren project. The total of the project is thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. He got fifteen thousand from Dane G. Hanson, forty-five eighty-three from, um, the Solomon Valley Community Foundation. In his notes, it says seventy-five eighty-seven was committed by Lincoln County.
The what?
Seventy-five, seven thousand five hundred and eighty-seven was committed by Lincoln County to be given to that project. We might need to look at the notes about that. And then he's applied for the Post Rock Community Foundation of forty-five eighty-three, and GL Hewitt of forty-five eighty-three, which he should hear back from both of those in October. So, a big chunk of the money has been, um, uh, the grants have been awarded. And I will go in and see if I can accept them, or if he, I don't know if he accepted them, or I need to accept them, cause I think he was going to do that. But I will check. But I thought somebody should probably check the minutes for that seventy-five eighty-seven, because if it's not in there, then we need to decide how.
Where it's coming from.
Where it's coming from.
Dawn, do you remember that?
I remember him asking you for permission. He told me that you guys had approved it as well, but I don't remember.
But I.
I remember you guys approved him applying for grant funds.
Right, and that was the talk about the nine-one-one fund and what that could be used for. I think that propagated a whole series of conversations about what, who owns it, and because what, didn't he go to the cities and ask if they still wanted to own, cause they own like the pole and the ground that the siren is on, but then the siren is gonna be owned by the repeater board, and then he wanted to know with the repeater board and the communications department, who owns which equipment, because they both use it. Does that sound familiar? I would have to look up the video, I guess. Do you know, did they have a deal?
No, I would say the Post Rock Community Foundation and GL Hewitt, we will find out by the end of October, so by that time, we need to know if the rest of the money is there or not.
Okay. Does the repeater board spend its own money, correct? And do they have a separate, no, levy, a separate levy for them?
No.
No.
Do we just buy fees from each of the departments? And even like the health department, we have radios, so we pay a fee every year to use the repeater board.
Okay. So is the repeater, is, is there, are there any notes about the repeater board getting any of their funds to that?
I haven't looked through that file completely, so.
Cause I think what they agreed to do was take on ownership of the, of the sirens.
I can look at that file. I haven't opened it all the way, I just would.
Who's the president of that board, or the chair? I don't know.
Richard Ansel is who comes and checks with us, but I don't know if he's the chair.
Okay.
All the I M T, incident management team, regional items were transferred to Ottawa County. There was also a trailer, and there were signed agreements that they would accept the responsibility of, like, I think they have to be insured and upkeep, all that thing, all that. So they are gone, those have already been taken over to Ottawa County. From the mitigation plan meeting, there were some surveys that were supposed to be turned in from the cities. Um, I, I'm not sure if the commissioners have researched a survey, but this week I'm gonna try to figure out. Nobody had, I think there was two counties that had had any surveys returned, the rest of the, the region, none of them had any surveys returned, so we're not the only ones, but I'm gonna see if I can find those, and I guess I'll just go to the cities and ask them to fill them out. It's what hazards do they see in their community? And, and rank them, you know? Like, probably earthquakes were rated really low, but Hutch has probably put that high on their list now, since they've had so many. Yeah, so, um, I think winter storms are number one, um, but I'm not entirely sure, but I will look through that stuff and get that done. Um, the next mitigation plan meeting is November seventh, and that will be one of the ones to approve what's been sent in, so the surveys have to be done by the end of September, I believe, and there's also a public survey that we can put on Facebook, uh, for that. I talked to David about his Facebook page, and it's connected to his personal page, because that's kind of how you had to set it up. So I recommended to him that he shut that page down. And so it, when we get a new one, we need to figure out how to set up a page that's not connected to a person, cause the health department isn't attached to mine, it's its own page, so I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
You could just, I think you could just register under the email that belongs to the county, cause you have to register with the email and a password, and then that would create the, the username and.
And I know when Rod was here, Rod had it under his name, and I don't know if that's why David did it that way, but, so that page.
Well, it's easier, you can just set up a page at any time, if you have a mobile, a, a tab for yourself, but.
So, anyway, I recommended that he shut that down, so.
Sure.
And then I, today, or maybe tomorrow, I will get over there and change the message on the answering machine. And I thought I would just change it to say, you have reached the emergency management office, if there's a real emergency, dial nine-one-one. If not, um, leave a message and somebody will, somebody will return your call, although it may be several days, or something to that effect, so I gotta think of something better to say. But he said he doesn't really get that many calls, um, on his phone in emergency situations, it's mostly on his radio, so, and, um, but I will try to keep up with those. That's all I have right now.
Do we have a local council of defense? Do you know what that is?
No. I think a long, long time ago, didn't they have like, when they had air raids and stuff, they had a council of defense, and they had crackers and stored water and all kinds of stuff. I don't know that that's.
We haven't done that since the kids had to get under their desks.
Yeah, long, long time, but I don't know.
Well, I'm just, I'm reading through what you brought us. I would say section C is what they're referring to, is that we are, we are instructed to identify the person who heads the agency responsible, because the mandate is that you have to have an agency responsible, and then section C says, you must en- identify the person who heads the agency responsible for providing such services and furnish additional information relating thereto. And so, down under F, it says you can appoint the council of defense to basically fulfill that obligation of forty-eight nine twenty-nine.
I don't think we have a council of defense.
Right. So, basically, this isn't saying it's a position that you have to create, it's a council that you have to create, which would, I think, would kind of be what the L A P C is.
The L A P C by statute is just to mitigate, um, chemicals in the county. And who owns them, who stores them, how, how much of the chemicals are there, and there are certain reporting guidelines that they have to send in a report every year in March. And you have to have an L A P C that meets at least once a year to review those. We've turned it into a quarterly meeting that all other emergencies are discussed about in it, but by statute. Chemicals are the only thing.
Okay, chemicals. Yeah, I mean, this basically says that you have to create the plan, and have the plan in hand, and keep it updated, and that you have to establish an agency responsible for that, and then you have to identify who that person is that's the head of the agency. So really, all of these counties who have just created a position for it, that's not necessarily an agency, but they're fulfilling the obligation by doing that.
So, anyway, when you talk to Eric, I, like I said, that's way above me. Don't appoint me, that's way above me also. I'm fine to do paperwork, but otherwise, no, so, that's all I have.
Okay.
And I'll probably come back every week just to give you a little update.
I appreciate that.
Because there are signatures and things like that.
Are we understanding that you've taken on some of the receiving bookkeeping for the ambulance billing?
Um, I think someone's gonna talk to you about that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that still having to do with her, or?
It is, but I have patients. Well, like I said, we can't bill, we don't do ambulance billing, and we probably never could, because it's way out of what we bill. But we can do the receiving and all that stuff, cause we know the codes and everything, so, yes.
But you've volunteered to kind of.
Yes.
Help with that, and I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We do QuickBooks, Sherri Saltzer does QuickBooks, so, we have someone who knows how to do it.
Well, and that you're there every day, I think that was some of my concern with hiring a director, is when they're not there every day, and you have to catch up on everything with this twenty-four hour shift.
Well, I think we can stay, like, two hours every, whatever day.
And are you just gonna bill out to the ambulance shed, or how do you?
That's, I think Dawn was gonna talk to you, but I think that's probably fair that.
Okay.
Okay.
That, we do that.
Thank you.
I gotta, I have a patient, or I would say, but I think I have somebody in between that goes.
No, I appreciate you filling us in on all of that, and we will call them later, and I will try to send you an email to say what he says to us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, before we move on, I just wanted permission, before I forget, to send an email to this Ashley Sperry questioning.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the hospital, Mr. Grandow.
Thank you. I've got a prepared statement I'd like to read, and then a couple of handouts for the commissioners. Changes were made to the county's budgeting process this year that were not communicated to Lincoln County Hospital. In years past, we were sent a note by the county clerk, generally in June, asking us whether we wanted, uh, how we wanted. asking us whether we wanted, how we wanted our mill levy distributed. There was generally a choice, just take the mill levy or another sum. That didn't happen this year. This year, we were told that our allocation would be based on a budget. We submitted in late April, early May. It's my opinion that the changes to the county's budgeting process this year detrimented Lincoln County Hospital and the future of the people of Lincoln County. Since two thousand and eight, we've submitted a budget to the Public Building Commission every year in compliance with the terms of our bond covenant with the Public Building Commission. I've also asked to meet with the Public Building Commission and made a request last week.
I have a question about that.
Just, I will, I'd like to read my statement and then I will take questions if you would please. Thank you. All right, this year, because of some false furor over the county's budget and out of courtesy, we basically submitted a copy of our hospital budget to the Board of County Commissioners. We're now being punished for that act of courtesy. When I inquired about the budget process in early August, I was told that in all likelihood we would not receive next year what we had received in tax support this year, five hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars. Now, I'm reliably informed that under the old budget system that we would have received approximately six hundred and twenty thousand dollars in tax support in the coming year. Today, I'm making a request for that six hundred and twenty thousand dollars in tax support or ten point eight-six mils, whichever is larger. The average tax support received by eleven of our peer critical access hospitals here in the state of Kansas is seven hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars. The mean, or median, rather, sorry, is seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars. Those numbers are based on publicly available data compiled by our auditing firm, One Lingo, Nelson and Johnson. I also want to convey that is the opinion of some members of my board that not allocating the full mill levy funds due to the hospital may violate the results of an election held in August of two thousand that raised the hospital's mill levy to ten point eight-six mils. Now, the numbers I'm referring to are listed on a spreadsheet here. And these are the, these show the peer hospitals that we're being, that we're comparing ourselves to. I would further expand this to say that the vast majority of critical access hospitals that are county hospitals receive a substantial amount of non-operating support from their counties. These are just the ones that are close peers to us as far as facilities, types of counties and things of that nature. I am aware of a very limited number of critical access hospitals that do not require large amounts of tax support. And one of those is Citizens Medical Center in Colby. The other is Mitchell County Health Hospital and Health System in Beloit. Different communities, a different type of medical staff, a number of things go there. So I would just like to make this public clue that you continue to fund us at the ten point eight-six mils amount. Now, I'm sorry, Commissioner Flue, you have a question?
Just the one that you started off by saying that you had presented to the Public Building Commission. Are you, do you mean that you had given the budget to the commission representative who was coming to your hospital board meetings?
We sent it in, to the courthouse in care of the Public Building Commission. That's all I know. That's what we had been doing for years. I don't know what happened to those budgets, but I'm told by my chief financial officer, we've been doing that as part of the requirements, I think, of the.
Because I had never seen a budget until this year. So the two years prior, I had never seen a budget. The only thing I was aware of is that you were sending a packet, which would be your monthly meeting information, to the board's representative to the hospital, which was always Terry, Terry Finch before. And then we, when we reorganized, we sent Mr. Lowman, so.
I don't know what happened to that. It could have, I do know that the budget was sent. I believe my chief finance officer explicitly on that. What happened to the prior ones, I do not know. You know, you can speculate till the cows come home, but it could have gone into whoever was receiving it. Like not, you know, just put it with some other paper somewhere. I, I do not know. And I, I don't want to really speculate on that.
Well, I, the reason why I'm bringing that up is my, my growing understanding of the statutes surrounding the public mill levy tax and the internal tax of the allocation from the general fund to the hospital. There's supposed to be this negotiation over the budget and then whatever is determined by the board of county commission to be your actual deficit needing funded by tax dollars is, it is supposed to match. So if we look at your budget and see that, remember when I had asked you when you presented the budget what your cash balance was because you didn't include it? That was so that we could understand what the negative number would actually be. We, when we were given a negative number of a million something without the cash balance information, then we don't know what the actual generated revenue needs to be.
It depends on, on how you define that cash balance. As the questions I've answered for several board members, we have funds that are limited use. And so those would be part of our cash balance. So those limited use account funds.
But those weren't named on the budget, so I'm just saying, there was no cash balance on the budget for us to look at.
We have done this as we did in years past and there was never any request for any negotiation or this type of inquiry. If you would have, if you would have informed us of what you wanted, we've done as we've done in the past in those other county hospitals. We submit a budget and it's generally a courtesy budget and you go forward from it. I, I took the time, Commissioner, to survey all twenty-seven of the hospitals in the Sunflower Health Network, most of which are county hospitals and also critical access hospitals. And of those, everybody does submit a budget at some time to their county. But the county mill levy is fixed and goes forward. There is no negotiating over the budget there. They send budgets as, as a courtesy.
Well, that's actually in the state statute. That's not me saying that. That's in the actual statute.
What I'm saying is the statute is at best observed in the breach, so to speak. And so it's.
I don't know what that means.
It's not commonly observed by counties and county hospitals in the state of Kansas, to the best of my knowledge. And that comes from all the queries I made to the Kansas Association.
So you're implying that all of these counties are out of compliance with the state statute that requires them to.
I'm saying, I'm saying nobody cares and the statute is not enforced and it may not be enforced.
Why would the commissions not care if they're subsidizing the budget to see what portion of the cash carryover that they're subsidizing in order to make the budget balance? How does that make sense?
I'm not saying whether it makes sense. I'm saying that's what the practice is. I'm saying you changed the rules this year. If you want a new set of rules, give us the rules in advance, let us budget to that, but don't punish us because we didn't follow what you thought was the law.
I have a statement about some of this. I was at your meeting last Tuesday. And what were, you're asking your, what in full funded, which would be like six hundred and twenty thousand?
Approximately, I don't know.
And this last year was five hundred and seventy-one thousand, so it'd be up because of the valuation went up.
Yes.
And we, what we proposed in our budget is to give you five hundred thousand. So what we proposed is to cut your budget approximately seventy-one thousand dollars. And I noticed at your meeting last week, your total income, revenue, counting your operation support plus your other, you have seven point two million dollars you made in revenue this year. So if we cut you back, it'd be one percent. We're giving you less. Now, I know that may be a lot of money, but one percent less is what we're asking you. And I see what the issue is at the hospital more than anything is here, your expenses here. We, you have eight point five-two million in expenses this year, two thousand nineteen. And last year was eight point two million, so your expenses went up three hundred thousand dollars. And as you know, you, Mr. Eric Auding was there, the auditor last week. And he indicated that now because we're in a position of some questioning on the, that you're going to have to get a counselor now to help you determine how to spend money, budget or whatever, because we're getting to a place.
No, 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 you misconstrued that. Basically, what we have to do under the terms of the covenant, the bond covenant between the hospital and the Public Building Commission is to hire a consultant to look at and review our charges and sources of revenue to see if there's anything we can do about that, so.
Mr. Auding specifically said to look for cuts though, so finding.
Well, he also said you can't cut your way out of this. There's, there's not a good way to do it.
Clearly explained that you're only generating revenue through donations and tax income.
Well, well.
Well, no, we generate revenue in our day-to-day business, but we can't survive without donations and tax revenue.
They had six point six million.
The non-operating expenses, he said, is your only option of increasing revenue in, in order to.
Well, non-operating, we need more non-operating revenue.
Which is five hundred and sixty-two thousand.
That goes along with, with the increase in valuation tied to our current mill levy as well as grants and gifts from outside. Now, over the course of the past five years, I've written and received in excess of five hundred thousand dollars in grants that went to the capital development of the hospital as well as to some of our operating expenses. Of that five hundred thousand, approximately two hundred and fifty thousand went to subsidize through the primary care grant, went to subsidize salaries in both of our clinics, the Sylvan Clinic and the Lincoln Medical Clinic. So yes, we're working on non-operating revenues. But we're, we're, we're re-equipping our laboratory right now, basically with gifts through the Lincoln County Hospital and Healthcare Foundation.
I'd like to back up and address one thing that was said though. You said what you believe to be a non-compliance or some other wording like that and, and that's not true. The mill levy is worded as up to, which gives the board discretion as to whether to levy that tax or not. And I will tell you that working within a tax lid of one point five percent to go from where we go, you said five hundred and seventy-one to six hundred and twenty, that is much more than one point five percent in an increase. So we can't afford to do that with our budget. Our total budget can only increase by one point five percent. So that five hundred and seventy-one to six hundred and twenty, I'd have to do the math. But even if we were to give the increase, it would not nearly come to that because of, because of the valuation change.
And we were told by our auditors, we just prepared the budget in the last few weeks. We had a gap, the tax lid was lower, approximately five hundred thousand from last year, from seven million to six point five. So we had to manipulate the numbers to comply with it.
We didn't even expend what we, we did expend last year. So that applies across the board.
We had to make some cuts to not the hospital, but other places to comply with that tax lid. Now, we could, some people could say, well, you could raise taxes. You could, we could go to the election this fall, ask for a vote from the public to say how many ways the mill levy value and raise taxes. I don't want to do that because I think we're already taxed high enough. Now, I know we don't, tax cuts are tough, but again, we're cutting you one percent of your total revenue, one percent. Now, that ain't a lot of money. Now, I know we.
One percent is a lot of money when you're talking about seven point two million dollars in revenue.
It's seventy thousand, seventy-one thousand.
Yeah, it's still, it's, it's, it's still a lot of money.
I know it is, the seventy thousand, seventy thousand bucks, but your, the expenses went up three hundred thousand this year. Your expenses keep getting larger and larger. You know, that's where I think you guys have an issue. You need to tighten your belt on expenses.
A lot of those were one-time expenses, if you pardon me, sir. You know, I'm aware that expenses were increased. Some of that was because of unforecastable circumstances that occurred. So I do not believe that we will continue that level of expense going forward in the future.
There's another aspect to consider. Just three years ago, the valuation in the ten mils only like three hundred and seventy-five thousand. So your tax subsidy input under your direction of the hospital went from three hundred and seventy-five thousand to over five hundred thousand. So you increased your spending, obviously, to match that tax subsidy, which you were not getting, and it happened all in one year. Because you're still showing a significant loss and the ratio and the portion of what your expenses are, you're still getting that cash subsidy from the tax dollars increased.
You have to understand, our primary payer is the federal government and they, they do not reimburse us what it costs us to deliver the care that we do.
But aren't we budgeting for that loss? I mean, that's the whole point of having.
Yes, we're, we're, we're budgeting for that loss. We budgeted for that loss.
Because you can definitely suggest.
No, no, through the three forty B program. Then we had an audit in that and we had to refund some money, so that, that's one thing.
What does that mean?
The other thing that happened was that Medicaid produced what they paid us. And we continue probably over the past five years not getting six hundred thousand dollars worth of reimbursement from the federal government's Medicare program because of the sequestration they put on with both the military and the hospitals approximately eight years ago. And so a lot of these cuts have been in government programs over which we have no control.
What is it?
Medicaid, Medicare and things of that nature.
You said you had to repay the three forty B program. What does that mean?
Well, we, basically, we had a federal personal audit. Your friend, Mr. Gerstman, did an F O A on that and got both the survey and the R corrective action plan. And so.
Is that a concern? You're saying that?
No, no, I, I figured you already had that information, but yes, we, we were audited and we had to refund some of the payments because one of the management companies we were using basically didn't enforce the regulations on the downstream pharmacies effectively.
So this management company, why are they not responsible then? Why is our?
Because we got the money and we had to refund it.
What management company is that?
I asked you that. I can't remember off the top of my head.
Do you know how much that was?
Not in total, no.
Just a roundabout number?
No, I don't, but it's, it's in.
So this is, so this is revenue from two thousand.
It's north, it's north of probably two hundred thousand dollars.
So I'll just put two hundred thou- so it's, so it's two hundred thousand dollars in income last year that you're having to repay out of this year's expenses. So that's two hundred and three hundred thousand increase?
No, 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 and it's not just last year. It was an audit for every year we've been in that program, which is about six to eight years.
So over six to eight years, you've generated two hundred thousand dollars worth of income that you now have to pay out over how long? In, in what year? In one year?
Yeah, in one year.
So was that budgeted in?
And it overlaps fiscal years. It was part of the last fiscal year.
Part of eighteen and nineteen.
We're still paying it in this fiscal year. This is our fiscal year.
So with this current budget, you already knew that you were having to make those payments?
Yes, yes, and that's part of the red ink.
Part of the increased expenses was to pay back some of the revenue that was generated in the years prior.
And that's what I, that's what I've been trying to emphasize. We're being, we've had some one-time expenses, but we still need the subsidy from the county if we're going to continue to serve the people of this county in the way to which they become accustomed.
Well, I mean, the subsidy right now is set to be half a million.
If we could give you this total amount, that make you healthy, we're fine. If we gave you another hundred twenty thousand, we're budgeting now for five hundred thousand. If we gave you six point two, six hundred twenty thousand, that would make everything better for you?
That would help a lot, yes, because of.
Even though it's only.
It'll come at the end of our, you know, the money won't be available until after the first of the year.
Even if it's only one and a half percent of your total revenue, that's, that's a big deal?
Yes.
I, I still think, and that may be, and I'm not know, I don't know much about hospital budgeting and all of your business. It's complicated. I don't know that much because you've got to deal with all those government compliances and regulations and Medicare and so forth. But you still have a lot of debt and, and expense. And I think we can find ways to trim that back, tighten your belt.
I, well, if, if we were to look at it, if we were to start cutting stuff, first thing I'd cut would be the Sylvan Road Clinic. It's never met our expectations and it's always been a loser, so.
That's funny because what you budgeted was a fifty percent increase in revenue there for this coming year. So that's kind of funny that you would use that as the example. And I'll just tell you, one point five percent, which is what our tax lid is, if we were to go back to what the numbers were, which is five hundred and seventy-five, five hundred and seventy-one thousand. And if we were to just hit that tax lid, that's only an additional eight thousand, five hundred dollars. So we're now talking. additional $8,500. So, we're now talking about not, you know, we're talking about we cut the 71,000 off to make it an even half a million so that we could make our own budget balance, which we have to do. We can't show negative numbers like you're talking about. So, if we did, let's say, reverse our actions and hit that tax lid, you're still only talking about $8,565 on top of the 571. So, just so I don't make any mistakes, I'll put it in my-
Well, it looks like, it looks closer to 50,000 to me.
Well, that's because-
It would be-
If you go from 70 to 620, I believe.
Well, that's because the valuation went up.
1.5%? No. It's only 9,000, it's just under $9,000.
Every little bit helps.
Well, that's because the valuation went up that much. To make 10 points on mills there, 620,000, that's what he's, he's wanting to fold 10 mills, which would be 620 some thousand, not just the one and a half percent.
But what I'm saying is, we are, we are committed to a tax lid. So, if we raised every department by 1.5%, that would be their line item. The 1.5% increase would only take them to 580,000, is what I'm saying.
I know.
So, that still doesn't fulfill, even if we were to change that, it still doesn't fulfill the obligation that you must have budgeted in, assuming that the valuation is going to increase and that the 10 mills would equal the 600 and some thousand. Would that be budgeted in at that number?
Well, that would, we started developing those budget numbers a year ago, so I would have to go back and check. But yes, we, we factored in a lot of expenses because we're not good guessers. But we were also dependent on the tax subsidy from the county to help with our non-operating. There's no way I'm going to make this hospital have a positive operating margin next year. That's what I'm trying to point out with this and the other statistics.
No, I don't, I don't think that's what's in question.
We don't have the facility to do that because we don't do OB, we don't do surgery.
Well, I'll just express some of my concerns. You have Jewel County listed on here, and I happen to know that Jewel County providers actually contract to the county to be their, what is the word, consultant, their medical directors for their different departments, like their health department and their EMS department.
Right.
And the proposal that we got from you was, I think it was like $20,000 or something to add on to county expenses, to ask our providers at the local hospital to do that for us. So, there are some negotiations there that have not gone on in the past that could definitely be of a benefit to the county. And so, I'm also concerned that part of the contractual obligation that you created with our local providers was not ever presented to the board. And maybe there should have been some discussions about how-
Which board?
The Public Building Commission and the county commissioners who-
Oh, I'm sorry. I report basically to the Board of Trustees of Lincoln County Hospital.
Well, it's my understanding that even the Board of Trustees for the hospital were unaware of the terms of the contract. You had already, you know, put together the contract with the new providers. And so, my concern is some of these other places are utilizing their providers for ER shifts and things like that, which would cut your own costs. Because if they're being contracted at that dollar amount, whatever they're making, and not performing any of the other functions for the hospital to decrease some of the expenses, I think that should be discussed. And I don't know what the terms of their contract are right now because, quite frankly, I haven't filled out my core request. I've had all these other things going on. But it seems a little concerning that we haven't made any kind of negotiations to cut those kind of expenses. And so, when he says increase in expenses, I'm, I'm pretty sure that I was at the hospital board meeting when there was a question asked about what, whether or not those providers were going to be given any kind of ER assignments or anything like that, and you said that that wasn't in a practice.
The way this works is basically Dr. Chima supervises all, both of the, Dr. Chima supervise all of the mid-levels that work for Lincoln County Hospital. That's part of their contract. There's no direct cost in their contract attributed to that. But Dr. Chima is available to talk to any of those providers about any patient that they have, basically 24/7. So, they do participate in that. Now, are they required to physically report to the emergency room? No. Do they? On occasion, yes, because we have mid-level supervisors who oversee all of that. And I believe that's kind of how I explained it at a prior meeting, because that's the way it is. There, there's actually, I can't remember the contract details. I don't have that in front of me. But yes, so Doc-
It's my understanding that we're hiring out agency to cover ER time, and we don't have any obligation-
No, we don't hire agency, except when there's a-
When I was there, there was someone from Oklahoma. So, who is that? That's not, you're not doing agency contract?
That, that was Scarlett Bearden. She was from Oklahoma. That was, pardon, Scarlett Bearden.
So, that's a local employee?
We had an employee contract with her. Yes, we employed her. And so, we've since, she's since terminated that arrangement. But yes, she was an employee of Lincoln County Hospital.
Okay.
Okay?
But you're employing someone to cover all of the shifts, and we don't have any obligation of our own providers to cover any of the ER time?
Yes. Our own providers, who are employees of Lincoln County Hospital, cover our emergency department. There are four basic, and sometimes there are schedule conflicts, and sometimes there are holidays when we will go out to agency for one person for a day or two. But most of it is covered by Lincoln County Hospital employees. We employ them. And we also contract with Avera, the emergency, to provide physician services. Those physicians are all licensed in the state of Kansas. They're all board certified in emergency medicine, and they're credentialed to the medical staff of Lincoln County Hospital with consulting privileges, which means they can consult with these providers, advise them, and do things of that nature. Now, at the same time, Dr. Chima helps with the oversight of those mid-levels as well, because he is their responsible physician. He's responsible for, we currently employ a total of six mid-levels. He and Mrs. Chima are responsible for the oversight of all six of those physicians. So, they are involved on a regular basis with them. They meet on a quarterly basis to discuss how things are going. We had a meeting, I think it was, basically while I was off on funeral, was the last time they met and talked with each other. So, no, the Chimas are involved in the day-to-day operations of the clinic, the hospital, every part of it, the emergency room. They're available for consultation. So, just because they don't take call, call, doesn't mean they do not participate in the operations of the emergency room, the skilled swing bed unit, the acute care unit, both of the rural health clinics.
I'm not talking about participating in the patient care. I'm talking about covering the shift so that you're not paying somewhere else to be there, because during the week that might be-
They're doing, they're doing what I pay them to do. And so, you have to remember, it is difficult to recruit physicians to a rural community, because basically what you're recruiting is the spouse, the wife, generally. And so, I feel fortunate that we were able to get the physicians we've got. And the physicians that are training now, if you go down and talk to the young ones, they're doing it. Basically, they don't want to work more than eight to five, Monday through Friday. They want their evenings and weekends free for their families and children. So, they don't want to take call. That's why in large cities, and what infiltrates back into the rural areas that surround those large cities, you know, in large cities, your emergency rooms are covered by physicians 24/7. Nobody does hospital work anymore, because they have hospitals that cover the inpatient 24/7. Nobody comes to the ICU like they did when I was a nurse and worked the ICU. Well, they come in and do that because we now have specialists, intensivists, who come and supervise everybody in the ICU. So, when you're training these young men and women to be physicians, and you're training them in Salina and Wichita, Kansas City, they want the lifestyle that they see there. They, they may want to come back to rural Kansas and actually practice, but they want a lifestyle that lets them go to their kids' baseball games, or soccer matches, or what have you, and leaves them free on the weekends, too. So, everybody is going to a model that basically gives them as much free time-
So, if that's, if that's the way of the future, not the movement, how is it-
And that's why, that's why we're doing it here.
Then how is, then how is a county hospital like Lincoln County going to stay open and provide 24/7 coverage if it's based on this model of, how do, how do I say that?
Well, maybe I just let you do all the physician recruiting. I don't know.
I asked you a question. I didn't say you had to answer.
Commissioner, I don't know. I tell you what the situation is, and what we're doing to make it work the best we can, to provide care, good care, to the people of Lincoln, Kansas.
This is not a question, you keep bringing up the question of the, the accessibility to the physicians, the patient care in question. None of that has been brought up by this board. So, please don't make assumptions.
Ma'am, that's what we're in business for.
No, no.
That's what we're in business for.
We are here to talk about the budget. We're not here to talk about patient care.
What we're here in business for is patient care.
No one is questioning the quality of care. No one's questioning that, sir. So, I don't know why you keep bringing it up.
Because that's our main, that's our main mission.
It's a talking point for you, and it has nothing to do with what we have the ability to do with our numbers.
It has everything to do with the budget, because without the budget, we cannot provide the kinds of services that the people of Lincoln County deserve.
Well, unfortunately, after the budget has been published, it cannot be increased.
Okay.
So, that is going to be the short answer for this situation. Now, we can make adjustments within our own budget to reflect certain changes. We can make decreases. But there is no ability of the Board of County Commissioners to increase the levy after it's been published in accordance with the state statute.
Well, then I ask for the maximum amount of mill levy for my hospital to be able to continue to provide the services the people of Lincoln County deserve.
Well, I think you've got our budget, and that's the most you're going to get. So, you need to figure out how you can adjust your operation to meet those requirements, because you're not going to get any more money.
I have a question on the Sunflower Health Network.
Yes.
What, what to good does that do for us being in that? I'm not, no, I'm questioning, I'm just, I don't know, that's a bad way to ask it, like I'm not accusing Tori of bad. Just what's the advantage of being in that?
Well, basically, it gives us access to the larger group purchasing organizations in the United States of America. We are, get discounts on what we buy through this organization. We get rebates on what we buy when they come through as well. So, it's financially beneficial for us to be a part of it.
One reason I ask it.
We also get a lot of training provided by Salina Regional Health Center at no cost because we are members of the Sunflower Health Network.
One reason I ask that is because-
So, the purchasing co-op?
Well, I, I asked-
Part of it is, yes.
Well, I asked it because I was, we've been at some meetings, I talked to some other commissioners from other counties, and one of them said they got rid of this because they said it was expensive and they forced you to comply within their system, which made it more expensive to operate. And some people, I talked to some issues, said they got out of this, except for our health network.
Well, some people like it, some people don't. It's been, it's been very good. I thank for Lincoln County-
Has it provided cost savings for our county?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Is it, is it forces us to spend money to comply with their requirements to be with them?
Well, I don't, I don't know what your, your other county commissioner is referring to, but you know, the, the only cost we have is our annual membership dues. Everybody pays-
So, then why isn't everybody in that? If it's such-
We just add, we went-
I mean, why aren't all hospitals in all counties into it? If it's a good deal.
We just added, we just added 10 hospitals from Northwest Kansas to Sunflower Health Network. Okay? And they all came in as a group because they realized we've got one of the better group purchasing and things. We, we get rebates. Basically, we have a mobile MRI unit that we contract through Sunflower Health Network. We get rebates on the skin.
What's the annual fee for that, for Sunflower?
I don't, haven't got that off the top of my head.
Does any of the, do any of the board members know what the annual fee is for Sunflower? You said we added 10. Do you, are you part of Sunflower Health Network?
Yeah, we're in it.
I'm the current president-
Oh, you are.
-of the board of Sunflower-
Is that a nonprofit organization?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I just was wondering, because some, I talked to-
And the board of it's made up of hospital CPOs.
Is that a paid position?
No. I wish.
And also, one question I talked to you before about was, well, you do have a lot of contract nursing, like-
Yes.
-which is like 25,000 a month, which is like $300,000 a year-
Yep.
-for people that are coming in here to work here, and they get paid good money, and which is contracts, good, they're like, probably most of them are not in Lincoln County. And I, I was just wondering, asking you, and I talked to Krista. I know it's hard to hire RNs and pay them good because there's a big demand for them. But somehow, we could hire more RNs and get, with, without money, you could maybe have them live here, buy a house here, have kids here. Instead of contract money, just goes all away and-
I, Commissioner, Commissioner, I understand that, Commissioner. I don't like hiring contract persons, because you have a lot of training and a lot of other things that you've got to do. But what I will tell you about contract nursing is that it's a fact of life in the United States of America with nursing at all hospitals. We, yeah, we probably spend at least 25,000, however much a month. But, you know, Salina, they have two nursing schools in Salina, and Salina can't find a bunch, enough nurses to hire.
There's a big demand. I realize that.
Because they just brought in about, I think, 22 or 23 nurses from Kenya that they're going to try and train for, to work in their hospital. They have basically at any given time, anywhere from 45 to 70 openings. They have enough, they have enough understaffing that they actually closed down one of their medical units because they couldn't staff them. So, it's, it's a problem.
I'm going to ask a different question. So, the last meeting that I attended, and I know Mr. Lemon's been going monthly, there was a question about the obligation for the bond payment. So, you are in the process, I assume, of hiring this consultant who's going to help-
We are in the process, but I need to meet with the Public Building Commission as the Public Building Commissioner. I've talked with Dawn about getting a meeting on that.
Let's, can we schedule that next Monday? And when we-
Well, Monday is a holiday. I don't think anybody will be here on Monday.
I wouldn't be keeping track of that very tightly, because my schedule doesn't allow for holidays. Let's do Tuesday, then, at the end of, we could close as-
I was concerned about you choosing the end because you were already over today.
So, let's start, let's start. You're right.
That's why I thought maybe-
You're right. Let's start with, would you be able to meet with us first thing Tuesday when we start our meeting?
At, at what time? Eight o'clock, eight thirty?
Well, what if we did nine? Because that would give us an hour before we start the commission, and we can just keep our regularly commissioned, regularly scheduled commission meeting at 10. So, nine o'clock, Public Building Commission, please. Anyone opposed?
No.
And we'll continue on with our regular commission meeting at 10. And so, then you'll be able to explain to us what your plan is there for covering the bond payment and how that's supposed to work.
Yes, yes. Very briefly, we have a consultant in mind, and she has a lot of experience from a record firm. So, I'll leave it at that for right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I have to run over. I think everyone has been a little behind today. Dawn, you are on the agenda next, if you want to do us in on the ambulance questions.
Well, Hannah just called and said that Eric called and said he's waiting on your guys' phone call, because I told him it would be somewhere around 1:00. So, can you guys contact him?
Yes, what is the number? Or do, can I do it on this?
You can do it on that. I think you might have to dial nine, though.
To get out?
Yeah. I think you press the phone.
Okay.
And then, oh, yeah, okay, 9175-646-2517. I believe his name is Eric Stewart. Eric is the person.
Eric Stewart, it says right here on this thing. Eric Stewart.
Hey, this is Eric speaking.
Hello, this is Alexis, and I am the chairperson for the Lincoln County Board of County Commissioners. How are you today?
Good.
So, we had a, we were directed to contact you about the status of our emergency management. I guess it was, it's an agency according to the statute?
Yep.
Okay. Did you have some questions for us?
Or some advice or whatever?
Uh, no, I just explained to your county clerk that you guys need to make a proclamation appointing somebody new for their interim until you hire someone.
Okay, so, I was reading this statute, and it says that each county shall establish and maintain a disaster agency responsible for the emergency management. And then-
And then it, you know, they shall participate in our jurisdictional arrangements for such purposes, et cetera, et cetera. And then it says that they require that they establish and maintain the disaster agency and then there's something down there about creating the plan. The, where is that? It shall, shall prepare and keep a current disaster emergency plan for the area. And then under section C, it says identify the person who heads the agency. Is that who you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to identify the person who heads the agency, but we don't truly have an agency? I understand that...
You do. Your agency can be one or 100 people.
Okay, so one person serves as the agency, okay. So we need to appoint a head of agency.
Does this, does this person need to have a certain amount of requirements to, to have this job? Or could it be about anybody? Or do they have to be certified in certain areas to have this? Or what?
Yeah, if you go into the Kansas statutes, it'll tell you, excuse me for a second, okay?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I've got some noise back here. Okay, sorry about that. We had a lot of background noise here and I had to get rid of it. Um, so basically, the State Kansas has listed the minimum requirements that are recommended to meet by the second year through KEMA, which is the Kansas Emergency Management Association, which is a professional organization within the state of Kansas that all emergency managers work with. State Kansas recommends that you follow those guidelines for your emergency management agency director and all people working for them. And that's taking some ICS courses that are pretty much all online. It's directed through the 402 course, which we presented in your county four months ago, I believe.
You said by the second year, so if we appointed someone right now, they don't have to be credentialed?
No, but they need to be working towards it.
So currently, I think we're, we're trying to start some negotiations where we could do a county sharing and maybe a contract for that particular position?
I would recommend against that.
Why is that?
Uh, the state of Kansas, their position is that each county should have a full-time emergency manager and we're trying to work each county in the state to move towards that. Uh, if they follow the tenants of the plan for emergency management, be it response recovery, mitigation and preparation, preparedness, if they're actually doing all of those areas, they will be fully employed. They'll actually have more work than what they can generally accomplish in a full work week. Maintaining that plan, working mitigation grants, any type of recovery that you're doing and managing that recovery, short and long term, working with FOADS, assisting the LEPC, dealing with your, any type of hazardous mitigation that you have in your EPRA, EPRA and your Tier Two, your SARAH, hazardous materials in your county and ensuring that, all that stuff's accounted for and managed and identified. There's a lot of stuff that they're going to have to work through.
While we understand that that would definitely be an obvious recommendation from someone within the organization in what I'm assuming is a paid position, a county like ours has to look for places to financially be frugal. And there are plenty of examples throughout the state where other people are contracting this so that they don't have to take on those expenses. So I think, you know, Lincoln County's situation, our, our population, our tax base, we have to look at things in a way that's different than somewhere like Johnson County or Gary County. I mean, we just don't have the resources available.
Well, I, I think it's unfair to compare yourself to Gary County or Johnson County. I think if you were to be more realistic, you would compare yourself to, say, Republic County, Mitchell County, Ottawa County. Those are counties that are more comparable to what you guys are doing.
Well, there are several counties around us that not only are they sharing this particular position, but if they don't share it, then they have additional obligations for that employee and that's something that...
I'm aware of that. I'm just telling you what the state's position is on that.
Oh, well, if you're aware of that, then you understand our, our situation.
I will also recommend to you, you guys, this is your county and I fully understand that, but you do, you want to provide what's best for your citizens in time that you have a disaster, a preparation for a disaster. Um, what you also need to know is that the county commission, as you well know, is where the buck stops. Um, and if you have a disaster and we don't have somebody in there or if it's not being fully followed, if there were a situation where it were to go to court based on lawsuit, it could end up on the county commissioners. You guys would be held accountable. So it's in your best interest to manage the program, ensure that there's somebody in there that's capable and competent and has your vested interest.
Who is hypothetically bringing this lawsuit, out of curiosity?
Somebody, let's say you guys have a disaster that you didn't warn people for, prepare people for, and they find you guys liable failing to provide adequate response, mitigation or preparation, you guys would be held accountable.
So then is this position, so then is this position statutorily in control of all of our local faculties? Because we have volunteer fire departments, we have volunteer first responders and we do have a paid EMS program. But basically, what you're saying is a failure on a part of a volunteer organization is going to be...
No, they're covered under tort liability because they're first responders. They're covered under the state. The statute requires you guys to have an emergency manager that knows how to coordinate, manage and deal with the plan and respond in time of disaster. I'm merely making recommendations to you, making sure that you guys understand it and then you make a decision from there.
Do we have a time deadline here to make a proclamation to appoint an emergency manager?
Well, all you would be doing right now is appointing somebody that is a single point of contact in the county for an emergency that the state knows about. And that person can hold that position until you hire somebody. But we need to be able to have somebody that we can get ahold of and if somebody calls up to the state through the duty officer or through the emergency management coordinator, we know who we're dealing with. So that's what we're recommending right now, is that you guys identify somebody as an interim, have them work towards it until you get someone hired.
What is, what is your position?
I am the emergency management regional coordinator for the state of Kansas for North Central Kansas and the Metro Division.
And how many people have that same title across the state for how many regions?
Well, there are seven of us total, but I'm filling two positions right now.
So it could be someone already employed within the county, like a law enforcement person or a emergency EMS person. Is that, would that be acceptable?
Yeah, it would, but I would reckon, I would recommend against making it the sheriff. Uh, if you have a deputy that could fill it or there's a police officer or somebody like that. But you really don't want an elected official filling that position, if at all avoidable.
Why is that?
Just, you don't want the sheriff to be the emergency manager at the same time, especially because he will have priorities that pull him to a different...
There could be a conflict probably between...
It could.
His job versus his emergency manager's job.
Right, and he's going to have more of a focus on investigative things and stuff like that and he may, the, the response portion of it, he might get tied down in things, doing coordination and dealing with resources and establishing your EOC that's going to keep him busy there and not allow him to fulfill his duties as sheriff. So we recommend appointing, against appointing the sheriff.
But a deputy would be acceptable or an emergency...
It's the sheriff's, yeah, the sheriff's agreeable.
Yeah, right, right, sure. Obviously, everybody has to agree to it.
Okay, so you are the regional manager and there are seven regions in Kansas and so...
No, I'm a regional coordinator. I'm not their manager. I'm their advocate to the state.
Okay.
For the region?
Yes.
So there is a regional manager as well?
No.
Okay, so seven regions in Kansas have a regional coordinator?
Yes.
And then those seven regional coordinators report to?
KDEM, Kansas Division of Emergency Management.
So there's an entire state department that...
There is.
Uh-huh, and how many people are employed in that office?
Oh, I think if we're fully employed, there's 65.
Say that again? 65?
Anyway, we need to, uh...
I'm, I want to know what we're dealing with here. This is, you said 65?
Doesn't matter.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not going to make a question.
I just want to know the details. 65?
Yes, if we were fully staffed, we'd have 65 people.
Okay, well, we will create a proclamation and hopefully we have someone that's willing to delve into some of that coursework. And in the meantime, so are you the person for the North Central Regional Area that you, you track this information for the counties that are in your region? So we would report to you then or do we need to go directly to KDEM?
No, that will go to, you can CC a copy to me, but it needs to go to Stephanie Goodman, who is our communications officer and she will update the books and get that contact information out to everyone.
Okay, so there's a communications officer and where is she?
She's here in Topeka, KDEM.
Okay, so the communications officer, is that one for the state or how many?
There's one.
Okay. As the regional coordinator, are you just available for contact for input? Or are you, are you, do you gather and coordinate any of the information for your region or you're just a contact person?
No, I'm out there, I work in the region. I work with each of the county emergency managers.
Okay.
I meet and talk to them weekly, attend their meetings. I tell you, attend your LEPC meetings when I can. I'm an advocate for the county emergency manager to the state. And I'm also, anytime there's an event that the county emergency manager feels like they need assistance from the state, they call the state and request us and we go out and we're like a liaison officer from the state to the county emergency manager.
So then are you a state employee?
I am.
Okay, and so then do you help facilitate FEMA paperwork for losses for counties, say like in flooding situations?
Nope, that is part of our public assistance program.
Okay, we...
And that's a whole, that's a, those people work for our agency, but it's a different group of people.
And how do we contact them?
Well, you can get ahold of me or you can contact the people that were assigned to you at your initial meeting for your applicant briefing.
We've done a lot of that already at the Highway Department for this last flooding, for this last spring and summer.
Yeah, you guys should have already had your applicant briefing.
We have all kinds of paperwork at the Highway Department now, but Dawn's been working with...
Yeah, he should have a case manager for them.
Anyway, okay. Now, we got, how quick do we need to point this, this, make a proclamation? Like today, tomorrow, next week?
Well, it's not good to go without, so I would recommend that you guys do it as soon as possible. That's why I spoke to Dawn this morning and sent her the copies of the paperwork so you kind of have a template to go by.
I did not receive that.
Did you hear Dawn? She said she did not receive that.
She did not get those emails?
No.
No.
And I even looked in trash and it's not there either.
Do you have the correct email address?
Uh, lcclerk@lincolncoks.org.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay, I will send it again. Is she, can she receive email right now?
Yeah, I can.
Yeah, she's sitting here with her laptop, ready to go.
Okay, let's see here, I'm going to copy this to... Okay, I just sent that again.
And if we appoint someone to make this proclamation, then we should contact you back and tell you who we selected?
Then we have to go straight to KDEM.
Just when you saw the paperwork and signed it, scan a copy to us and I'll tell you, if Dawn...
We go back to your...
Did you get that email yet?
Uh, yeah, I did get it this time.
Okay, well, and I was in the middle of a thunderstorm when I was sending that last one and the power went out. So maybe it got stopped, it didn't go through.
Could you please repeat what the communications officer name is?
I'm going to send Dawn her contact information.
Okay.
If you'll have it and she can email it to her.
Okay, thank you very much for your time and explaining how that scenario plays out.
Yep, and you guys have got my contact information. If you have any trouble, just give me a call.
Okay.
Well, you have anything else to advise us on while we're here?
I'm sorry?
You have any other, anything else you would like to tell us while we're here?
Uh, no, I would make sure that somebody gets in there, uh, I think what Donna has your information for Kansas Planner.
Yes.
Um, and just make sure that she's able to get in there and once you appoint somebody, go into Kansas Planner and update who your point of contact is for emergency management at the time.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You all have a good day.
Uh-huh, bye-bye.
Bye.
Who's his man?
Eric.
Eric Stewart, he's on your sheet here.
Oh, okay, oh, cool.
Um, Randy, you were asking why I wanted to know. Because as being publicly elected, I feel like it's my position to expose some of how these networks unfold. I mean, I think all these taxpayers would like to know we have 65 people on staff in Topeka who are overseeing and recommending that each county spend their money to have one person point of contact so that they can find someone directly and have any information that they want access to, like that.
Well, yeah, I agree with you.
And I personally have more faith in my local fire department, my sheriff's department and any other person who's willing to be a part of that kind of response team. That's not my field or my forte, but...
No, I understand.
I just have a lot of faith in them and I think that's why they do it locally and this is a state mandated program.
I understand where you're coming from and you just want to know the system.
Yeah.
I was just curious, saying we got to have to comply with all this no matter what, though, that's what I was...
Well, we have to appoint someone and actually I, Dawn, did you have more about the ambulance billing that you needed to go with us?
Kind of, sort of, yes. I mean...
So before we do that, I was going to ask for just a five-minute executive session related to employee issues and it has to do with this. I think there's someone who may be willing to be appointed, but we would have to, my suggestion is we would have to discuss that, contact the person, make sure they're willing because it would have to be now or within the next day or two.
Yeah.
And then we could either call a special meeting to just make that appointment as a board. We could just do it by phone conference instead of waiting until next Monday. Does that make sense?
Well, we better do it pretty quick here, yeah.
But I really don't want to just throw the person out there and say, hey, I think this person should do it.
According to this Eric here, we need to do it quick because like the other night, people were calling me Saturday night because that storm was coming in. They're wondering who now to do, who's the emergency manager? And I said, well, who's the point of contact? And they were asking me and I said dispatchers and the sheriff's department, I guess, about the old people we had to deal with. But I didn't know and we do need to fill this position quick temporarily.
Did something happen that there was an emergency or they just wanted to...
No, well, we had that storm come in at midnight Saturday night and it was a hell of a storm. It could have had a tornado and then what do we do? And we, and heaven forbid, they, somebody could have sued us because they said, you didn't have emergency manager coordinating all the county's people and somebody died out here and a tornado killed them. And maybe that wouldn't be realistic, but it's possible, that's, you know, yeah.
I know, I just want to stress, though, that the position is not to be there to, they're not a first responder. In fact, I had asked about that before. I thought, wouldn't that be interesting if your emergency manager could also be one of your EMTs or something like that so that you had that connectivity?
But they are coordinator for all the people.
Right, but it's post-career. It's a lot of it is post...
They are not a coordinator for the county response.
Not for the response.
They absolutely cannot tell the sheriff or EMT or fire department where to put your fire truck or do anything. He is not a coordinator. He is a guy that can holler for help, period. And I take deep exception to a guy from upstairs calling me and telling me, I'm going to sue you or I'm going to cause you to get sued, you're going to lose whatever because you didn't do your job. That's not the case. He is not a coordinator. And I am not convinced he's full-time in Lincoln County.
Well, then when we do have a storm come in, then who's, who's, who, who tells everybody what to do and where to go?
Uh, let me ask you, who, who do you talk to when the storm comes in? Who calls you up?
Nobody.
Who do you think ought to call you up?
No, well, I listen to the scanner.
That's exactly right.
Sheriff's Department and the dispatchers.
He's the guy that has all of the authority over there and all the communication devices. He's not the emergency manager. He doesn't have squat for telling you.
Well, then the dispatchers are really where you're hearing all the information.
That's exactly right.
Well, that's what I told the people that called me. I said, listen to the dispatchers on the, on the scanner and that's, then you'll know, I guess. Well, that's what I told the people that called me, I said, listen to the dispatchers on the, uh, on the, uh, scanner, and that's, then you'll know, I guess, much as anybody. They think, I don't know, some people are...
Okay, so, I'm wondering if we can't just have a five-minute discussion privately, so that we're not publicly asking these people to do it without talking to them. I move to enter into executive session for five minutes for the purpose of discussing an interim appointment. According to KSA seventy-nine forty... KSA is your chair, or... May I look at your little...
Oh, all right, I've got one left.
Seventy-five, sorry, seventy-five forty-three nineteen-two B, it's been a week. Uh, number one, personnel matters of non-elected personnel with the, uh, county clerk and the commission to reconvene in the basement meeting room of the commission. It's been moved in seconded for a five-minute executive session discussion. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, and none opposed. Okay, I'm gonna stop this. Can you turn it off? Please, we're just... I, I will say that what we should do is, if we get a response from someone who wants to of the ideas that we've had, we should just call a quick special meeting where we just conference to make the appointment, and then have Dawn just forward the information to, to the communications officer at KDM. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. We, we haven't made any decisions, but we did talk about some ideas of who we could appoint, we had a couple of different suggestions. So I'm gonna go ahead and contact these people, see who's willing and under what circumstances to be appointed as the interim, and we talked about, um, just paying for active duty, so to speak, as that appointed person. So it's not really a job offer or anything like that, it's a temporary appointment of an interim who would get paid when they're either...
Kind of like a contractual type, right?
Right, right.
Like consultant, they're working, we'll pay them.
But we're talking about current employees, that way we don't have to actually employ someone yet, we're gonna ask some current employees if they would do that, just get paid when they're in active duty, so to speak, and/or getting the education courses, and so we're just gonna go from there. So if we do have another meeting this week, it'll be because someone has accepted that appointment, and then we're gonna conference to make the official appointment as a body, and then have Dawn forward the information to the Kansas Department of Emergency Management. Any questions about that?
Will you say when they're in active duty, does that mean when there's a storm or something?
If they, yes, if they have to do something as the emergency manager, then they'll bill us for their time.
And I think we should give them a leeway, when they take their need, they get the free rein to go have and do it, then, in other words, we can't say, oh, is this now, now, in other words, we don't want to micromanage them, I don't know.
No, they take it upon themselves to turn in their time, and they're just gonna turn in time as they use it. It's not gonna be an actual job right now, we're gonna wait and do this appointment and see.
And also, since we're talking about emergency management, I went down too on a vehicle you talked to Spear about.
Did you get any...
Well, I got some more information on it too, because I was wanting to know, well, some people ask, couldn't we maybe, the motor's bad, like you said, beginning to get hot, and then the engine's bad. I was wondering if they could get a replacement engine for it, but Spear said, that's a, that's a hybrid engine, in other words, it's a gas-electric. And he said, those are pretty rare and scarce, to try to get a, and you'd have to get that similar type of engine, because the wiring and the computer system are all set up for that type of hybrid engine, and they're trying to find a hybrid engine, it's almost impossible, and it'd be very expensive. So they're recommending that we would maybe take, let them have a ticket to an auction, as you said, Alexis, uh, and just sell it, and then... And he said, you know what, we have another vehicle ready that the fire department uses, which is like a Suburban, it's already set up, and I don't know if we could use it part-time for emergency management.
We don't own it, though.
That's first rule fires truck.
We don't own it.
We could, emergency management can share.
In this case.
You would have to talk to that fire district board.
I was gonna say, well, Mr. Spear, Mr. Spear just stated that...
We'll reimburse mileage at this point.
Well, Mr. Spear just stated on this, that he, he knows that that vehicle, he worked on it, and it's all set up with all the lights and all the stuff for emergency management people. And he was saying, maybe they could share that, but I don't know, that's maybe the real...
We also have...
It's not county-owned.
We also have the old expedition that was emergency management that's at the highway department, maybe you could...
What do they use that for now?
I think they use it to go out to job sites, I don't know if they left the lights on it or not, because he got on in the lights when he got this truck.
Well, and what, and what, also, what Jared Spear told me too, is that we could, if we sell the auction off that pickup, because it's in a situation... He's thinking, he gave me the reason why, because if we sold it outright, it'd be best just to auction and get it, you know, it runs, yeah, it runs okay, it's just it gets hot.
If someone wants to invest in it, they can.
But the thing is, he would take out all the lights and all the comput- all the...
Just strip it down.
He would strip it down with all the lights and all the emergency management computers and stuff they would have in there, then we could put that in another vehicle, we need to.
So I, I have a motion then. I move to request a report from SNS Auto on the emergency management vehicle and its malfunction. As well as approve then stripping the vehicle and preparing it and taking it to auction.
So you're saying right now is having to strip it and...
I'm saying, if they give us a written report of this is what's wrong, that way we know.
Yeah, we want a written report, to prove that it's, prove it's damaged.
Right, and then, that way we just have our own records, and then their, the offer that I had talked to him about was strip it down and prepare it to take it to the auction. So do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
You'll take it to auction, or you're ready?
Let him take it.
He, 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 he'll handle it.
So take it to auction, to the auction then.
Yes, yes. But I want steps one, two, and three, you know?
And I think that is the correct way to proceed, because I thought too, because this is a two thousand... Oh, man, I ain't here.
So under discussion, that will...
Would you like us to show you how to use it?
Let me, how about, how about turn it, how about turn the power off, how about that?
There you go.
There you go.
So...
Damn thing.
What my understanding is, we need to deliver the title, which Dawn, you have the title in your possession.
Well, it's in the treasures, but I can get it inside.
Okay, that's, that's what we need to happen then, in order to fulfill this motion, so everyone's under the understanding that that's gonna go through SNS. Any further discussion? Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I believe that concludes our discussion on that. Dawn, would you like to move on to ambulance?
Um, who am I giving the title to? Am I to direct to Jer- okay, straight to Jer?
Please.
Okay, so, um, I put the ambulance down as a discussion item. First off, um, Jim has asked me, and I know that we've discussed it, I have to reduce the workload or I need staff, one or the other. Uh, and so Ladonna had spoke with me about completing ambulance billing. And when I say billing, I mean receiving in of the money, and maybe potentially... Well, but they may potentially be billing, because once the billing company gets through with their three billing cycles, it gets turned back over to us for collection. And I feel like we should continue to bill those people, just in case we can get some money, and then also submit it to set off. Now, some of the people are out of state.
So let's call it ambulance accounts receivable and accounts payable, because we know we have a billing company contracted, but...
Well, accounts payable would be more, um, it'd be receivable, accounts receivable is fair, because accounts payable is more what we have.
It's both end, it's both ends of accounts receivable.
But, but, yeah, you're right, receivable. And, you know, the one thing that she stressed was that she is not a biller, they are not billing, they will never bill, they'd like you to keep the billing agency, um, to do the actual billing of the insurance to the insurance carriers. Um, with that being said, I did, um, I know I kind of conversed with Jim one day as I was stressed out. Randy, I think I haven't really conversed with you, I did converse with, um, Alexis about it as well, and Alexis has specifically asked how she would be billing. And I did talk to Ladonna about it. Currently, right now, I'm billing it out every hour that I spend on it, I am billing to, um, the ambulance department, so I would assume that the health department would and should be able to do the same thing. Um, Ladonna kind of indicated that she would put Sherry Soltzer in charge of it, and that she would oversee it, um, and be responsible for the billing and to ensure those stuff. Two factors is what leads me to this conclusion. Number one, I don't really think Derek has the time to put forth with it if he's taking two twenty-four-hour shifts a week and they happen to have a run, because if they truly have a run, their, yeah, their time is, is kind of eaten up. And I do believe the ambulance attendants have the right to sleep, so I was a little concerned about that. The other aspect of it is, is their computers are really, really old, and the laptop that I helped him install his email on is like three directors ago, or maybe even four directors ago, is so old and antiquated, it would never run QuickBooks to begin with. Especially if my old laptop that was the commissioner's is, was in the same boat. So I thought maybe this would be the best solution overall. Um, if you ever moved to a director that was full-time, it would probably be best for it to go back there, but I don't want to make that decision for you, but I, I also want to make some assurances to Ladonna that you guys actually make motions of exactly who's responsible, and that you understand that she will not be billing, um, health insurance plans for ambulance runs, if that makes sense.
What do you mean, if we move back to a full-time director? I thought we do have a full-time director. But you're saying if they don't take shifts, if you want to like an office hours.
Eight hours, five days a week, eight hours.
Yes, if you would ever move back to that direction and this ever stopped working, you know, that, that might be something to discuss down the road. Now, the other aspect of it was, was, um, Alexis had contacted me about Fair Labor Standards, and honestly, when you guys set the pay and set the wage for, um, Derek and moved that position to where they were taking call time, I questioned whether or not the position was exempt anymore. I just really hadn't had time to call Fair Labor Standards, so when I did actually call Fair Labor Standards, I contact, or I asked them the question. Because he's replacing an employee that we would normally pay, his position is no longer exempt. And when I talked to Derek, he was like, well, just tell them not to have me have to clock in, and we won't worry about it. But guys, we can't do that, because number one, it doesn't matter, if we have one disgruntled employee, and it does not have to be Derek, it can be somebody else, they will come in and interview all the employees, and I want to do things upright and fair. And I talked to Susan Ling about it, who is my contact with Fair Labor Standards, and she said, as long as I go back and fix it, it's not a big deal.
You mean, we have to retro-pay for the two months that he's been in there, all the overtime?
Yes, so now, there's a computation that I printed off, and I'm sorry, I buried it on my desk and forgot it. But you can, so his salary can cover all of his time, whatever it takes to do his job, which could be however many hours, and then you could pay him for half-time, um, which basically, so what we would do is calculate his wage weekly. We would take his wage, his weekly wage, we would divide it by the number of hours that he worked, that is now his overtime or his hourly rate. We would times it by one and a half, and we would pay him half-time, which is what we would miss for overtime. That would kind of reduce the over, amount of overtime, or you can choose to pay overtime at one and a half times, regardless of whether or not he's salaried. But there is a stipulation where you could do, where you're paying him half-time, because his salary is already paying for his time. Now we just have to pay him for his half-time. Um, with that being said, I, um, I would recommend that based upon what he said, um, I, I feel like that that's probably fair. You know, he went in knowing that he was accepting the position at forty-one hundred dollars a month, and not thinking he was gonna get any overtime. Um, but I do believe that that would be the fairer side, is where we would take that, where his wage is considered for all hours work, and then we're gonna compensate him for his half-time. With that being said, your HR person, or myself, is gonna have to calculate his weekly wage every single week. And I don't have a problem with that, I already have the forms, we, we used to do it before.
So my suggestion is that if we're going to have these positions that are salaried, that still have to put hours in, let's just move them to hourly, because there's no advantage for the county to have the salary then. You may as well be using the time clock so that the information is automatically submitted, and you don't have to redo what you're saying by hand. If we have a salary, basically, the way that FLSA works is, if you are not the top management position with full flexibility of your time, then you still have to be paid overtime, even if your salary amount, dollar amount exceeds the required. So you either can make not enough money and not be able to be salaried and still get overtime, or you can make enough money but be doing all of these physical labor tasks where, or acti- activity tasks within your department, where you still can't be exempt from overtime. So I would say, we need to look at our structure, and only the positions that, like the elected officials and such, should be on the salary, and let the rest of them make sure that they're clocking the hourly, because we're having to track it anyway for overtime. Does that make sense?
You could do that, the only bad thing about it is that you lose the consistent pay for the, that's what entices people kind of to take salaried positions. Now, there's, there's one other thing that I can check.
But it's in their favor, because they're going to be getting the overtime.
Yeah, and they're gonna get...
It's not like we're gonna ever be paying them any less, because if it's based on forty, they know what they're getting.
That's true.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Just some months, there's a hundred and sixty hours available, and other months, there's a hundred and seventy-six. The other thing I thought of while you were just visiting about this, is there is on the time clock system a way to calculate a second type of overtime, and that's where they said that, okay, so some counties or some, some employers pay like night shift, make it extra money, and so like there's a differential, or they make it like double time overtime after they reach so many hours. I could see if they could set that up to just do the half-time for those salaried exempt, or salaried non-exempt positions. But, um, it, it probably would be easier if you just paid them outright.
That's how, I, I, I feel like we should do that, especially, you know, there was the public discussion about why is the commission trying to mandate hours of operation for people who are salaried? Well, there are a few reasons. Number one is, you're salaried, but you have office hours, so you are, you have to be available during office hours. If we're going to offer a salary to someone who does not necessarily have to have office hours, then why wouldn't we just contract them and save the benefits package for ourselves? I mean, it doesn't make any sense that we would continue to let people work whenever they want, and give them all the benefits of being a full-time employee. They should then just contract themselves to the county, I mean, plus, I'm for privatization, so I wouldn't see that as a detriment to anyone, I see it as a positive for those sectors.
It's just gonna affect our highway department director situation.
That position should be exempt unless you assert too much authority over the position, because they have to have the ability to make decisions regarding their department, administrative decisions. The HR position would be non-exempt at this point in time, because you guys are ultimately making the decisions of all administrative aspects of the position.
And they have to have office hours too.
Yes.
I mean, we can't just allow someone who has to have office hours to claim salary non-exempt self-time. I mean, then the, then the HR person technically, under FL, FLSA, could come in at ten o'clock and say, well, I, I'm comping my own time. If we have a no-comp time policy, then we need to be paying hourly.
And I know that people are upset, especially those that are salaried, uh, having to use the time clock, but we've always made them prepare and keep a time sheet, because we have the burden of proof, because the minute, and, and I'll give you kind of a past scenario. Basically, we had somebody that got sent with us, they reported us to Fair Labor Standards, and they come in and they, they reviewed us. They picked out one salaried employee to, to interview, we weren't requiring them to do time cards, and that salaried employee says, well, I work forty-five hours every single week, and commissioners just refused to pay for it. We had to pay them the five hours extra of overtime.
Just out of a verbal claim.
Yes, because we had no proof.
Exactly.
We have the burden of proof, and so what, that's why we've always done it. Now, there are counties that still apparently have looked out and never had a Fair Labor Standards audit, or that, that don't require it. So that's what I hear a lot from salaried employees, is why do I have to clock in? But, um, that is why we do it, that's why we require it, and, and ultimately, it's your guys' decision, I'm just wanting to let you know that I will go back and pick up, um, Derek for what time he has, and then if you guys want to change something in the future, that's fine too. But I will go back and pick up, I think he started at the end of June. Um, and I, I asked him if he had all of his hours in the time clock, and he said he did. And I just feel like that's the most appropriate thing to do. So your office manager at the highway department is nine times eligible, not going to be exempt. Your assistant depends on how much their boots on the ground. If you're wanting somebody that's boots on the ground and they're spending, I think there's like a, a certain percentage, and I think it has to be like sixty, forty, but I, I was gonna look up those.
Yeah, that would be important to know, yeah.
Um, but yeah, they can only, they have to have, I think, sixty percent administrative, forty percent actual laborist, and they have to supervise more than two employees.
Okay.
Two or more employees.
As long as you be Fair Labor Standards, I think fix Derek up, in my opinion.
And how do you guys feel about health department taking over the ambulance?
That's great, and it's gonna help subsidize her own budget, because the hours that you were claiming, she can claim.
Now, I did tell her I was still worked towards straightening up twenty-eighteen and prior, that if they could just start twenty-nineteen and work forward. And, um, we, I kind of went down and showed them what I was doing, I think Sherry, if you guys are okay with it, is going to come up on Thursday afternoon, and we're going to do kind of like what I normally do. Um, and then I told them, I'm just doing the best I can do, I'm, I'm not perfect, I kind of do what I, because I'm used to QuickBooks, QuickBooks from another employer, um, in a solid way, so there might be things that they can change that would make their life easier. And I think they just need the ability to make those decisions if you guys are okay with that.
We need to make a motion to, to do this?
I would like you to, yes. And if that's asking for too much, it's okay.
Exactly, what are we doing here? But I'll make... But I'll make the motion.
Make sure your motion is receivable.
Is that, oh, I thought we were on the time card issue for EMS.
Um, well, they went back to both.
We need both. So do the, do the appointing, the, the Health Department?
Why would you do, you know, you know it better than I do.
I move to appoint the Health Department as management over EMS.
Accounts receivable?
Accounts receivable. Until further.
Just for effective immediate.
Okay, do, edit that and go back. Just accounts receivable. We'll just leave it as that until someone changes it in the future.
I'll second that.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to place the Health Department in charge of the accounts receivable for the EMS. And we do this with the understanding that they will be billing for their time out of the budget set for the EMS department. This is due to the nature of the twenty-four hour shifts that we're having at the EMS department right now and the fact that we have the director on call as an active member of a two-person team during that time. So if something gets behind, we don't want it to lapse a week or two or between his shifts and whatnot. So any other discussion? Those in favor vote aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now, we need a motion to retroactively pay Mr. Walter for his overtime acquired as depart- since his hire, right? Since, since the inception of his hiring.
And do you want to do it at the halftime with his salary being for all the time worked? Or do you want it to be at the time and a half?
You were saying the halftime way would probably be the.
That's the cheapest way, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's the right way.
That doesn't solve the problem.
No.
But we can solve the problem after we retroactively pay him.
The half pay will bring him up to date and then we can decide what to do.
They will make us in compliance with Fair Labor Standards.
And I don't think that he's upset if we do it one way or the other. I think, but we need to move from here forward, changing it. So let's do what the suggestion was for the half, for the salary as however you want that.
As the number of hours worked. Okay, the salary consists of the, the total hours worked to complete the job. Salary includes the total hours worked in the job and to compensate Derek Walter for the halftime required.
And then someone to say, I so move.
No, second that, I like the Fair Labor Standards.
Fair Labor Standards to fulfill his overtime or to fulfill the overtime requirements. Okay, salary includes the total hours worked for the job and to compensate Derek Walter for the halftime required by Fair Labor Labor Standards to fulfill the overtime requirements as the position has been deemed non, non-exempt under FLSA. Except for, I can't move that.
I so move and seconded by Mr. Gilbert. It's moved and seconded to retroactively pay to cover the Fair Labor Standards requirements for the director of EMS, since he is taking an active shift and cannot be exempt from overtime. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor vote aye?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, motion carries. And I thi- I believe according to what we looked at in the budget, we're fine in the salary line item to do that. So now, we need to actually address this and make him an hourly rate based on the salary that we offered, convert that into an hourly rate and make sure then that he's paid that hourly and he'll get then the overtime.
What salary will he offer you?
It was forty-one hundred a month.
Forty-one hundred a month.
And then maybe.
You do, you do twenty-eighty, you do forty-one times twelve and then take that divided by twenty, right?
Well, he was working forty-eight hours though. So would you divide it by, take forty-eight times twelve?
Yes, you're right, because we expected him to be forty. So forty-one hundred times twelve is forty-nine-two. And then it was forty-eight times fifty-two is twenty-four ninety-six. So now we have forty-nine-two-hundred divided by twenty-four ninety-six. Comes to nineteen-seventy-one an hour. So then remember, that'll be calculated at time and a half for eight hours a week. Times, let's go back, let's see what that is. Twenty-seven point five. So it'll change to twenty-nine-fifty-seven during the eight hours. So.
Do you want to visit with him first about it, or do you just want to make that decision?
Yeah, we, we should probably deal with him first time.
But remember, he's accumulating hours every week.
Yeah, we just, we should still probably discuss this with him. Have he, have you talked to him about it?
If you go, I did talk to him about it. If you go to this hourly rate, he's probably gonna get more money once you decide than he is after.
I think we ought to do this, make the motion, and if we have to change it.
Yeah, let's not put it off till next week, because we have so many things coming down the pipe, things that we haven't even discussed yet, so.
And would we change him to hourly employee at nineteen-seventy-one, I believe is the hourly figure?
Correct.
I'll second.
Any further discussion, questions? If not.
Effective?
Oh, immediately.
Is today okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause this is beginning of the paper.
Perfect.
Okay. Sorry.
No, that's fine.
Randy seconded.
Yeah.
And then I interrupted you, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion? Those in favor vote aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And do we, do we have an email for noxious weed?
I think they share.
Okay, and then does John Paul have an email?
No.
Okay. So I would like. Okay, okay. I would like the approval of the board to just send this email, which is to all the department heads. And, uh, the commission now has this group email through the website. You can make requests or notes to the commission and we will open this as correspondence to the board. If you need a purchase approval or response from the commission, we will try to have communication here to avoid week-to-week gaps in decisions. We would request that you refrain from sending correspondence through the clerk's office as often as possible.
I would put as often as possible, just put a period, I can refrain from sending to the clerk's office.
Yeah, sure, sure. I guess, I was just thinking, there are some things that need signatures, but they can, my thought is that can be after.
That'll be an offline request.
Right, because if we don't approve it, then they don't need a signature for whatever reason. And if we do and you're filing the files, then they can come to you with their paperwork after they know that we have had the correspondence. Okay.
Well, they could still contact you for whatever other reasons they want to too.
But we're trying to, we're, we're trying to stop making her the switchboard
I know.
for all the communication. So do I have permission to send that?
Yes, we agreed it later.
Well.
Uh, yeah, but.
I'm sending it to all the department head. We created the, we created the email over last week's meeting and now.
Have we gone out for an HR person yet?
I put it in the newspaper and I sent it to both papers and I have it on the website. So, um, where else would you guys like to advertise? I have on our website.
We need Indeed.
Okay.
Um, I think you said Monster, we had to pay some astronomical amounts where, but what about Next Tech or, um, I think Next Tech was one that was affordable that we had the last time we were doing HR. Wasn't that one?
And there was another one too, that if you just Google like HR, it'd come up with it. Is that that one company you just said, Indeed?
No, that, that, Indeed was everything, but there are human resource, just like there are EMS type websites, they do have human resource websites. I would just say internet, can we just?
I know, I know that Hannah, um, went on Indeed because we had an account with them and she said it looked like they had closed our account. So she was trying to figure that out on Friday.
Just since the last time you used them?
Yeah. So I'm not sure, but they also inundated us with phone calls, like they were calling every single day, have you interviewed your applicants? You know, most of our, our applicants, they would like to be interviewed immediately and blah, 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 blah. And it just, it was getting.
Yeah, harassment.
Donnie would like to hear. That I normally, I will do. I kinda forgot, they used to just pick up the ads from the newspaper, but I think now you have to actually physically ask them.
Okay.
I meant to ask Chris Lindsay, why don't I talk to her this weekend?
Did you send out?
I did.
Okay.
I sent that and then we had some discussion on Lincoln Park manners.
Well, we did that already, that's, that's stuff with John.
Okay, so.
Well, Donnie asked us, emailed us a question too about, uh, when we get the twenty-five cent pay raise, if that affects commissioners.
Oh, oh, and the job descriptions, that was another.
The job descriptions, yeah, of the highway department supervisor.
Yeah, I think I had oversight on that issue you were talking about, Donna. I didn't even think about that. That wasn't purposeful.
I don't think we should make it from commissioners, the twenty-five cents.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion, say that?
No, oh, no, we already, we already exempted ourselves.
It just said across the board, but I didn't.
No, because we already budgeted the, no, the budget did not allow for that last year. It didn't.
Well, but the motion was for across the board, which would include every employee that we pay, which would include you guys, right?
You should have the same rule for the commissioners that they have in Congress, is that you cannot give yourself a pay raise. You can give the subsequent board a pay raise, but not yourself.
How, okay, if, if it was not your guys' intention, I can, well, I hate to say for renting.
I could take a new.
But I could just put a no.
We're not hourly, we're salaried. So you were gonna calculate.
Everybody else's salary.
Getting a twenty-five cent.
But you guys are getting a forty hour.
How about you just say, how about I put that you guys just said the commissioners was not included in the cost of.
Sounds good.
Okay, let me say it this way, when we approved the budget the year prior before these two were here, we did not budget that fifty cents, not any of it. So that was already, in my mind, that was already determined for the year's budget that the commission was exempt. Because everyone else got a budgeted line item with the fifty cent increase, but not the commission. When we did the two thousand and nineteen budget.
So not, don't include us, Donna, however you wanna put it in there.
I think, I think we need to establish a congressional device, you can't give yourself a pay raise, that's a conflict of interest.
Five or three. I don't want to.
You can only give a pay raise to the, to subsequent board, but not to yourself.
Every other elected official gives himself pay raises.
And they ought to go to jail for it too. Uh, actually, they don't, it's the federal level, you can't do that.
What else are we doing? Now, we were gonna, you were talking about supervisor.
Uh, we were talking about job descriptions and Donna had pointed out that I, I had done some editing and something was not kosher there, so let's look that up. Let me pull up her email.
Well, that was, yeah, well, yeah, you, you did it.
Okay, so this is what she said. The road supervisor would normally be an exempt position. And did I really intend to list all the state and federal permits and paperwork as the responsibility of just the office manager? Because if the, if it is, then we.
Why would you have two, two supervisors?
Yeah.
It's kind of, cause I, I almost took it that the office manager, when I read that job description, was higher up than the rest of them, or they're doing all of your supervisors' jobs. And if that was the intentions, that they're doing all the supervisors' jobs.
Then we don't need them to do that.
Then why are you needing supervisors?
Well, my.
Okay, let me pull some open here.
My opinion, I think the director who we hired should do a lot of the permits and documentation.
So is that something that's missing from the director's job description?
Because, because he's gonna want, the way we got it now.
Did he get a job description?
Yes.
So then we need to make sure we discuss that. And that's kinda what I said.
Well, I think he will be good at that, if I've understood with documentation, computers, uh, coordination with KDOC, FEMA, that.
Generating reports.
That thing, and, and all the coordination of all that stuff. I don't, you know, that's where I was, my opinion of what his job should be.
So answer this then, Donna, please. Did I forget to put the permit paperwork as part of the job description of the director? Is that where we are? Because I think that would be the direct.
I believe I did not see it there. Now, if it's there, it may not call it out as well as it did on the, um, office manager's position.
Because I would think that that would be coordinated between the both of them.
Well, yeah.
The, the office manager would be responsible for keeping it.
Who's the office manager?
Whoever it ends up being. That's what we're advertising for.
No, we're advertising for supervisor, that ain't office manager.
No, you also approved the office manager. Truck driver, equipment operator, mechanic, and let's see what else.
Yeah, but who's gonna do the, is that means that he, everything in the office, uh, to do the typing? Right now, we call Liz the office manager.
Correct.
Okay.
That's right, that's generally the office.
So we're gonna have the supervisor be the secretary and, uh.
The office manager gonna do all that stuff.
No, no offense, your supervisor should be able to type on a computer and fill out their permits.
Well, so then we don't need to hire another Liz type of person?
Well, you need to, her to do everything else.
The data entry for that job is time consuming, that's the office.
I'm just saying, right now, we call Liz an office manager and now we're gonna change it so that our new highway supervisor's gonna be called office manager and supervisor?
No, 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 no. This is my question to you.
Okay.
Is it your intention that the office manager will do everything that the current supervisor has always been doing and being responsible for?
No.
And if that is not your intention, that is how it reads. And that's why I said something about it, because honestly, if, if you've taken those duties away, I, I, I don't care how skilled they are or not, they can learn to do them. They can find resources to help them. I used to do them, I, it's not that complicated. If you guys keep parking them on Michael, they apparently do it for free for you, hoping that you will contract with them.
Keep their business, yeah.
Um, so there are ways that they can do about it, but the way the job descriptions currently read is that supervisor doesn't have any responsibilities to do any of the state and federal paperwork. It's all the office manager to do.
No, but I figured it was on the director.
I thought the director.
If that's my oversight, it's because I thought it was already in the.
I didn't think the director would do a lot of the.
That means we need to look at the director's job description.
Yes, cause I didn't see it in.
Then that's what it is.
Well, I think they all should be computer literate, everybody should be, to a degree.
Yes.
But, but I just, before, the way, the way we have it before, we had, uh, director, which was Michael, then we had Bob and then we had Liz, right?
Well, and we have those people not using the computers.
Yeah, and that's okay, I'm just saying, now, we're gonna, we hired a director, we're talking about a supervisor job, and then are we still gonna hire them as, just a secretary to help do the document paperwork?
She's the admin system, he does the decisions, he writes out the permits, she does the filing, the keeping up with, the bookkeeping and all that stuff with her.
Here, here's what I wanna emphasize, because I've been in the office and you can say it wasn't enough time, it's never gonna be enough time to understand what someone does. But in there, I noticed that everything that's logged on paper is then data entered into the computer and that is the majority of the ti- the physical time that's spent. So someone is going to have to keep doing that, because we're using that program to generate all of our cost reports, analysis and everything, all of our payroll and our everything, all of that.
I agree.
all of our payroll and our everything, all of that, so accounts payable. So I'll read through, this is the office manager. Under supervision of Lincoln County Director of the Highway Department, the office manager is a non-exempt position under FLSA. And is that still true?
That would be true, they would be subject to overtime.
Because they have an administrator, yes. So primary responsibilities include general bookkeeping and secretarial duties. This position also maintains records, purchases needed, work materials, okay, there's, there's some edits in there we need to do. Work materials assist with scheduling work assignments and dispatches. This employee must be able to work without direct supervision and be able to handle numerous job responsibilities at one time. Excellent organizational communication and public relations skills in handling confidential information is required. Here are the essential functions. Serves as primary contact for the department, answers incoming radio and telephone calls in a professional and pleasant manner. Records all incoming calls in a call log to be inspected by the director or supervisor. Eners data into various programs for the department's records, that's the data entry part. Files for storage, records on equipment, bridges, roads, employees, inventory and consumables. Maintains accurate records of equipment purchases and maintenance costs, that's all through the program that the data entries down there. Maintains all state and federal licenses and transfers personal, uh, personnel credentials to human resources officers, so.
Okay, the, the first part is what I have.
Okay, but maintains is not produces, so I'm under the assumption that the director is the one.
Okay, and it's not in the director's job description.
Good, that's a good catch, Dawn, so could you edit that?
Yeah, I have it up.
Um, so what they need to do is produce paperwork required for state, federal, and any other license or permits.
Right, they need to do the technical end of the documentation.
They need to make sure that all the Ts are cross denied or not.
And, and create the policies, create the contracts, the, the permits, coordinate with the bridges, the, all the, all the technical, the technical.
I've got produce paperwork required for a federal and state or state and federal.
Federal and state's probably better, maybe this needs edited, it should be federal and state, actually, it should be local and state and federal, but. Um, and any other license or permits required. That way, they are the beginning and the end of the paperwork, because the, the office manager is just storing it and/or maybe making phone calls regarding it.
I mean, they may be assisting it, but something like that, but not responsible.
But you're right, not responsible.
There should be coordination among all of them to help assist every, but the overall job should be, the director should be making the decisions on whether they could get a permit for this bridge over here, not, not.
That's a losing job.
Okay, assists with completing and maintaining state bridge project paperwork. Responsible for accounts payable expenses, manages accounts receivable for the department. Reports employee requests for leave time to be approved by the director and transfers time card information to human resources.
Okay, the bridge part.
What?
Um, the assist the bridge paperwork, I don't believe is in, in this at all.
So who's doing the bridge paperwork?
But I don't know about the road supervisor, it might be in the.
Well, a- and that's where it comes down to, what are we going to increase the pay for the head of the bridge crew? Because I think that's where the responsibility falls. The bridge crew supervisor or foreman or however we're gonna realign that system, needs to have more responsibility and more pay. And they can then be only responsible for that particular paperwork, which we already have a consulting engineer to help with. So it's more or less that person making sure that all the specs are right and coordinating with, do you see what I'm saying?
If it's bridge stuff, he does it.
So we're not.
Well, and this is the other thing, you guys now authorize approval to, to hire a bridge and all throughout the director of highway department, it says supervise the bridge supervisor. So are you now calling that the road supervisor and then is there a third person?
We've had a divide a little bit on the board, not an angry divide, but just, I, it, it's my understanding from being here for two years that to task one person, who used to be Bob Howe, to be on site and see what the bridge crew is doing all the time with all their projects and schedule their projects and paperwork file their projects, yada, yada, one calls, blah, blah, blah. Plus, logistically coordinate all the gravel that's being hauled around, where the truck drivers are going, who's even trimming trees? I mean, that is just too much for one person. So my original idea was have the director be over.
The grader.
Well, yeah, the road, the road projects, yeah, and then someone who like would be the head of the bridge crew, always with the bridge crew, always. Not transferring back and forth, checking on a gravel pit and then going back to the bridge, because it, it just seems like there's too much, um. That person was also responding on face to face with all the, all the concern calls. So it's just too much travel time and jumping around from job to job, I wanted someone designated specifically to the bridges, so.
So what do you want, now, last, last week, I thought we were gonna have, we, we got a director hired and then I thought we were gonna hire a highway department supervisor, which would maybe be.
Which we changed the position and we took the bridge word out of it.
Yeah.
So now I think we really need whoever, even if it's someone that's there already.
Well, I think we could still have a supervisor, but then appoint, like we were saying, maybe.
The, the head of the.
A foreman, a bridge foreman.
Bridge crew foreman.
Bridge crew foreman.
Yeah, and I think more responsibilities need added to their job.
We're still gonna have the highway road supervisor yet, we're, we're still finding that, but.
But the bridge guy would report to the head guy.
Director, to the director, which is ki- it's kind of just flop of what I had originally imagined, which I'm not, I'm not opposed to.
But he doesn't have, but he doesn't have, he ain't as big and high up in the, in the ladder as the highway department supervisor.
Correct.
But in the bridges, he's high up.
He, he's a foreman there, but he would report to the director?
That's right.
Okay, I don't care, I just wanna get what's straight here, what we're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, but what then, what's the task for the highway department supervisor, what's that person supposed to oversee?
Roads.
Just roads?
Well.
Just grader?
Well, I was a grauter, I have that one too.
All the, all the.
Truck driver, gravel.
If it's got dirt involved, he's gotta do it.
Can we go back, let me just finish up here, essential functions and, um.
So I said that it was missing bridge, so, because you had read that part, but it says responsible for oversight of all bridge projects done by the bridge supervisor. So to me, that seems that's on the lower level, that's the smaller bridges, that's the repairs we're doing ourselves, that's not.
Are you reading from the director?
Yes.
Well, because that director has to give their stamp of approval on the bridges when they're beginning and ending and, in what order?
So on the office manager job description, you have that they're in charge of, or that they're taking.
They're assisting with the paperwork for the state bridge project, which is what Tanner's doing now.
You don't have that. Yes, but Tanner might not do that anymore, depending on what you guys decide.
And I think that needs to fall on the bridge crew foreman, honestly, I mean, is it that difficult a paperwork, I haven't seen it.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It is.
We're probably gonna.
The paperwork I used to do, it is, it's a lot of.
So then let's, so then let's give that to the, to the, to the director, why not?
I mean, they can consult and assist and people can help, but.
Well, we're always gonna need a tanner, uh, an engineer.
But I was saying, we, we need to add that to the director's job description.
Yeah, I think the director should coordinate the, the technical details with the permits with the, with the engineer.
Produce state bridge project paperwork. Which will then be assisted and maintained by the office manager. Because this person doesn't, the director doesn't need to keep everything on file like the office manager does, he needs to produce it and sign it and get it out of, again, out of his office.
Yeah. Now, whether or not he's actually producing it or you're hiring somebody or contracting with somebody.
Consulting with the engineer would be his.
But he's still ultimately responsible for producing.
Making sure it happens.
And when we get, and then we.
How he produces.
And then, in my opinion, when we get the manager or supervisor or wrong, a director, they could determine who the bridge foreman would be, in my opinion.
I think that's what we could probably do.
They could appoint one, one, who they.
Get this super structure of the management, get it figured out and let them appoint and move and.
People around, yeah, at their discretion, that's what their management's for.
Okay, stores for inspection, gravel records, including gravel agreements, yards of gravel removed from each pit and state reports for mining and license.
Okay, I think that's what she said the supervisor does, is the state report for mining and licensing. She does all the rest of it, but they work together to do the state reporting, cause I guess the mining report is quite something. I, I don't know, I've never experienced.
Well, then put that on the director.
Well, he filled out the minor report, she provided all the supporting data, she'd come in there and say, this is all we got.
Yes, but I guess they have to go out and they have to measure and they have to do all of that stuff.
Then put that on the director, wouldn't that be?
Yeah.
Uh, that should be on the director, so just include that in that line for the state bridge projects and mining license.
Mining stuff, all those, you know, licenses and contract stuff should be with the director.
Actively implements mobile three-one-one for data sharing, assigns daily work orders in the absence of the director and supervisor. Then auxiliary functions, um, assists with federal and state agency reports and correspondence, records department one calls, and I mean that as in not that they make the one calls, but they sign them and then just keeps the log. Um, updates safety and education training records and MSDS sheets, serves as the dispatcher, meets with the board of county commissioners in the absence of director and supervisor. Attends and participates in training and educational sessions for department employees, provides documents requested by the open records officer. I added that in there because, um, it, the clerk serves as the open records officer for the county, but instead of the clerk being made to do every individual report, she could just pass that on and say, I need these, this is what's requested. Um, assists with emergency preparedness as assigned according to the chain of command and may be required to work overtime in emergency situations and performs other duties as deemed necessary. That's pretty much it.
That's fine.
There are probably a couple grammatical things I should change in there, Dawn, at some point.
Sounds cool here.
Okay, and then there was another one that we, that I sent. So we changed it to road supervisor and took the bridge off of that so that we can have someone focusing on all the logistics of the equipment, the training, being on the ground, being with the crews. Tree, this would include tree trimming, in fact, I don't think that's in there, tree trimming. Under the supervision of the director, the road supervisor is non-exempt and the position executes the planning, organi- organizing and directing of employees in the department. Duties include scheduling of work assignments, supervising employees and monitoring quality of work. The position assists with records, purchasing of equipment and materials and serves as the department safety officer. This employee will assume the responsibility of the director in his absence and the employee must be able to work without supervision and be able to handle projects simultaneously. This is a safety sensitive position and subject to random, uh, drug and alcohol. Essential functions, serves as the onsite project manager who executes the completion of projects set forth by the department's plan and project list, mutually agreed upon by the director and supervisor. Suggests and implements priority strategy for developing and maintaining ongoing project lists, supervises road maintenance and equipment operation while monitoring work quality, provides leadership and active participation on the ground with employees, coordinates logistics of employees and equipment during projects and ongoing maintenance. Prepares daily work assignments and utilizes mobile three-one-one, inspects roads, bridges, culverts and signs and assists with documentation. Participates in the application of gravel and specific technique and specifies technique and expectations. Designated as the department safety officer, purchases materials for the department, gathers workforce for various special or emergent situations and may be called out during off hours. Revises list of active projects to be completed, approves maintenance schedules and arranges necessary training for ops- for operators. Assists with maintaining accurate inventory of highway department equipment and supplies, reports on road and bridge construction and reconstruction projects and employee, employee work quality. Collaborates with preparation of long-term goals and planning for the department and updates board of county commissioners in the absence of the director. Marginal, um, we're gonna change that to auxiliary if, Dawn, you have that one open to edit?
No.
Okay, I'll do it later. Forty hours per week minimum with overtime pay necessary in the event of an emergency. Makes the one calls for special, uh, or assigns to subordinate for special projects. Locates gravel pits in the county and oversees gravel transport. Attends and participates in training and educational sessions for department employees, provides follow-up to citizen inquiries, assists with emergency preparedness and performs other duties as assigned. And that all got pushed down way too far though. Any suggestions on that one?
That was the road supervisor, right?
Yeah, yes.
Now, that's the one that I think should be exempt unless you're expecting them to work, I mean, I think it's a sixty percent, forty percent. If you're expecting to be physically on the projects and doing moving equipment, running equipment, then it would not be. But if you're just expecting them to do administrative work with.
No, it's just non-exempt.
I anticipate more than half of this time will be out on the ground.
Yeah, I agree, I, the only exempt position the highway department is gonna be the director and, and we've already substantiated that they have to give at least fifty hours. To me, that's because the administrative work is sometimes starting before the workday or going long after the workday in preparation for the week or the next day and the paperwork side of it. And then if something is not right, they can address it even when no one's there, you know? It's gonna be, that's gonna be the majority of the time spent for administrations through the director.
So we gotta make it all in general, but January, we presume.
No.
You don't have to.
I object.
I know, but I don't think we have a lot of choice, do we?
If and when you hire a woman, you can make it saker, and I'm the female, that's ridiculous.
I have no idea, I think we've put the, it normally just put the employee is responsible, the employee is.
Yeah, the employee.
Yes, I have a couple of his.
Don't say he or she.
Yeah. That's fine, we can, I'll fix, I'll edit some of that and there are a few grammatical things I didn't see last time.
Did we have another job description too?
We did human resource.
Yeah, they showed.
Which may need a little more, Dawn, you may need to give some more input on this, because I think I just went on off of what we had and then changing some of, we didn't, you know, cause we have a benefits management company.
I looked at it, I didn't see anything strikingly.
I reviewed it, but it was okay.
Well, I just added what he had asked for.
About what?
Serves as secretary to the board of county commissioners, performing all of the tasks assigned. Which means some phone calls and things that we can't do when we're not in session or, or that we've instructed someone else to do. Maintains education regarding employees, municipalities, state and federal agencies to ensure compliance. And I really wanna stress that when we do hire this position, we, we have to instruct that person to take certain classes within a certain amount of time, cause we did not do that last time and it really came back to bite us.
These are educational requirements you will fulfill.
Well, hopefully they'll have a lot of that ready to hire, maybe not, Dawn.
Depends on what we're paying.
Yeah.
Um, prepares and maintains accurate payroll accounts, including time clock system, personal time records, deductions, garnishments, direct deposits, deposits and the full names. Completes payroll projections for department heads, that's the report they get, right?
Well, and, and yes, that, that would be the length.
The salary line.
The longevity that you had me calculate, there's also like a work comp report that has to do projections of what we expect to pay out so that they can bill us and chain and where.
Okay.
Um, type things, so.
Okay.
And K work is with two Cs and not a K on the end, I fixed the ju- the highway department one.
Oh, okay.
That one I didn't catch.
I didn't know that, W O R C C?
Yes, and the road supervisor one, I think, now, I edited that one, had, um, director of public works instead, or.
Under the heading?
Yeah, or public works under the heading and I changed it to highway, but if you're gonna sit it back.
Maybe I'll just, maybe I'll just email you the edits and you put them in, since you already have my updated PDF or whatever I sent you.
Okay.
Okay, and not ju- I won't just send you a whole new one, cause then you'll lose your edits, you just transfer my edits into what you have there. Um, prepares salary and personnel surveys as required by various government agencies, maintains all personnel records, including employee list by hourly or annual rate and job title, their licenses, credentials, certifi- certifications and training. I thought that was important, because instead of having each department maintain their own records, we need that in their employee file. I mean, each employee's file should be complete with what their, I mean, it's just, it's better for the county to do it that way.
At one place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um. Um, pre- prepares and maintains employee benefit projections as required, well, that will just be in collaboration with the, with the company. Acts as a contact for health insurance, capers, AFLAC and all of their supplemental and deferred compensation plans. Assists department heads and employees with employment issues and conflict resolution, including application collection, interviews, disciplinary action, evaluations and exit interviews. Maintains the drug and alcohol testing, EAP dot, non-dot and FTA. Executes department heads' requests for recruitment, advertising, pre-employment screening, background checks, interviewing, initial paperwork processes, et cetera. Give employees, gives, I guess I should say, employees with employment orientation, that is not right. Benefit enrollment, it, we should probably say during, I don't know how I messed that up, but that isn't even structurally sound at all. Employment orientation and benefit enrollment is what they're responsible for, so why don't you just put responsible for employment orientation and benefit enrollment? Cause they should be introducing the person to their department head and doing whatever paperwork needs to be done, get them started. It seems like we have a big gap in that process right now. Um, maintains current job descriptions for all county positions and updates annually, of course, that would be done in collaboration with the board. Maintains current accurate account of employees' leave time and conducts exit interviews and provides the necessary information to terminated employees regarding COBR, capers, leave benefits, et cetera. Files workers' compensation and unemployment responses and coordinates training and educational sessions. So my vision of that is if the department head says, hey, we need to do this training or that training and then that person actually facilitates the scheduling of it and says, okay, department head, you can do it this date or this date, we can do it on site or we can do it here, and then they just say, yes, yes, no, no, and then that person facilitates it so that it's one less thing for the department head to do.
How about schedules, employment orientation and benefit enrollment?
Yes, yes, I don't know what I was doing with that, that's me working on it over a couple days and just coming back and forth. Um, contacts board of county commissioners with updated information or correspondence. I guess I should say reports to board of county commissioners. Develops and implements succession planning, helps to maintain the county employee handbook and evaluation documentation and policies. Participates in training and educational sessions, provides information to the county auditor, answers incoming phone calls, engages in general clerical duties for any department needing assistance, it says may engage, so it's not required, but we might ask them to, and then performs other duties. Is there anything that I missed there or edited wrong?
Uh, you see anything else, you're doing it, now, do you think something else should be in there?
I think it covered about this end.
Okay. So then, we're just gonna give her permission to do a few more of those edits with adding into that director, the things that I forgot.
That's fine.
Kind of pushing off that bridge duty paperwork from the director straight to the bridge crew. And then, so there's a cross there, because the road supervisor is not necessarily involved in the bridge issues unless he needs to be. Because that, that crew needs to keep, I mean, there's just so much to do there.
Be, I could envision more so their interaction as if they needed to replace a culvert and they needed the bridge.
The, the equipment.
Like they all needed to coordinate that.
And when we got a big bridge, like twenty foot long, or we have to get with, with a tanner, that's when the director. And when we got a big bridge like twenty foot longer, we have to get with with a tanner, that's when the director needs to be involved with the permits and all that stuff. That's a lot bigger deal, we may have to contract a crane guy and all that stuff.
We go to buy an excavator?
But even then.
Maybe we can, maybe later.
Well, and we need to look into the mowers, that that was something that we told them we would look into, and and my suggestion is if we are gonna replace those tractors, to get one big enough that can haul that grid roller.
Horse or better.
Yeah.
Of all, for all of them or one of them?
Hundred twenty each.
But what about the one to pull the grid roller, cause we need to have.
You're gonna have to have a, probably a four wheel drive.
Or front wheel assist, maybe, probably like two hundred horse, hundred seventy five, two hundred.
So who can we, who do we wanna assign, or do one of you wanna start researching some?
Well, there's youth tractors, Ag ones, I I would, I would almost wanna talk to the the guys down there working what they think would be best, cause they're doing it all the time.
Wait until we get.
Let's wait till we get people.
If we can do that, I mean, yeah.
Let's, we've got a director coming on next Monday, right, or the Tuesday, he he's gonna have to get involved with that stuff.
That's probably, uh, because I emailed you guys, but so yes, he has accepted and signed the job.
Yep.
And I have one pre-employment testing back, I don't have the other one yet, but um my assumption is, is that it will pass and so he will be here on Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Okay, so I don't know if you guys want to go ahead and move to approve him this week or if you wanna wait till Tuesday, what you guys want to do, that is up to you, but.
Is he supposed to show up Tuesday, would that be the first day?
Yeah, that would be his first day.
So he'd be here before us, and I would like to meet with him that day.
Yeah, let's just bring him in, start the meeting.
We have to prove him now of hiring officially.
Yeah, if he's gonna start working on it Tuesday morning before, I'm saying he'll be here before we are on Tuesday, so.
Unless you ta- unless you tell me to tell him to, he start his day at ten AM.
Yes, because you know what, I think that'd be more appropriate, we really need to go through the job description and I think that would be better.
Yeah.
Instead of letting him just kind of walk into nothing, let's have him meet with us at ten, we have the PVC at nine so that he can come at ten and please don't schedule anything for an hour.
Okay.
Can we do that, or do you already have something on that?
Budget hearing at ten thirty.
Oh, well, that's fine, half an hour is fine, we'll make it work, that'll make it work.
We've already, but we need to review.
No, but I would like to go over the job description and talk a little bit about the structure, because we still have people to hire.
And review where we're at.
Well, we need a formal welcome, you know, just.
And which turns into one more thing before we close, we need to schedule something for the other departments.
Yes, I was meant to bring it up, and I would recommend we start with the health department for political reasons and a lot of others, but let's, let's use.
But do we wanna do them all at once, or do we wanna do one at a time?
Let's do it individually.
One at a time? Okay.
Let's book some for the health department, we do it over there and we do the same sort of format that we did.
Okay, so.
And we need to do all the courthouse people a long time sometime.
Yeah, but let's politically, let's do the chairman or the head of department committee next.
Note taken, so we have, what do we have on the agenda for, okay, so we have our, we have our PVC at nine on the third, um, can we flip that up? Cause today's the twenty sixth.
We need.
So we have PVC at nine on the third, which is a Tuesday, we have department head of the highway department coming at ten, and then we have the hearing for the um, budget at ten thirty, and then do we also have the, no, the garbage hearing, the?
It'll be the sixteen, cause I.
Okay, that's two weeks, okay, so let's do the night, let's do the night then, can we do that? At noon on the ninth, so no, we will go to the health department.
Oh, okay.
How many folks have got over here?
Five?
Five.
Five?
It's, I think there's four, cause I think we only work on Thursdays, but I can find that out for sure.
Well, you took care of the last one, I'll do this one.
Suit yourself.
Well, I can do it.
I'll do this one.
We're gonna hold him for the sheriff's department, more of older than eight. Doesn't matter, we can, I can do it more.
We'll rotate, no, I'll do one now.
But should we get back to making a form- formal hiring now of our new highway director, we do do that today, I think, or should?
I think that's up to you, you can do it well two ways, if we still have one pending task, you can approve him.
Let's let's do it on the third, to make it a formal acceptance, welcome aboard, read the job description.
Make the motion, I agree with that.
Okay.
So if you, would you please contact him and tell him ten AM?
Report here at ten AM.
Yes. Any other business to come before the board today?
I'm sure we forgot something.
I'm sure we did too, but I think.
And we may be having a a special session here shortly.
Yes.
When, when, tomorrow?
Well, I don't know, it'll take me some time to contact them, see who's willing to attend.
Thursday afternoon, I can't be here, I gotta.
Well, I just expect it to be, maybe Dawn, you could even set up the conference, like even if you used your cell phone and the.
Yeah.
And just.
You're gonna contact.
I'd rather call them.
Supposedly we know how to do that, I I'll have Hannah help me, but yes, we can do that, we can call you all and up to four.
Okay, oh, good, on the same line, on the same thing?
Yes.
Oh, nice.
Yes.
I'm just saying, we're not gonna meet for more than ten minutes, so I don't wanna drive here, because.
Oh, no, oh, we could do it online, oh, yeah, I see what you're saying, when, tomorrow, I think?
Well, I hope to have some information.
Well, I got, I'll be around anytime.
If I, how about this, if I get a, if I get an affirmation, I will email you that we're gonna get together at a certain time, I'll just check it with Dawn and just call in, or one of you can stop in here or whatever, okay. Anything from the public sector, okay, thank you, and we will definitely be scheduled for Tuesday at nine AM and possibly this week for a special session.
Seven o'clock at nine hundred, right?
Uh, the third, yes, you're right.
Oh, for you, for the fire chiefs? The quarterly?
Yeah, I thought I'd go out free food.
Then we're adj- adjourned.